Thank you for joining us for the Board of Commissioners meeting for Deschutes County, August 11, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is citizen input for any item that is not on the agenda. So if anybody's interested in speaking on any subject, please join us. This will be a three-minute public testimony.
Is this on?
Yes, and please introduce yourself.
Richard Cluff. I'm in Redmond, and I just want to come in personally and thank you, Tony and Patty, for taking the stand. You have taken on masks and mask mandates. I talked to you guys actually a couple of months ago on the phone about this, and not that I prophesied it, but here we are with the mandate from the governor to mask up again. I've got a couple of statistics I want to share, and my resources are from Dr. Jim Meham, Dr. Peter McCullough, Dr. Dan Stock, and Dr. Russell Blaylock. All agree, masks do not work, period. And this is Dr. Blaylock's publication on masking. In fact, he states they pose serious risks to your health. And if you just think about it, science will tell you that we're not meant to breathe in CO2. We're meant to breathe in oxygen. That's a given. It becomes unhealthy in less than three minutes. It becomes a serious health the longer you wear it. The longer you wear a mask, the more serious it gets. But common sense will tell you that, doesn't it? Oxygen, CO2, what are we meant to breathe? These guys have studied it. There's over 17 studies that show that it has hazardous to your health. But the governor doesn't want to listen to science. But thank you for listening to science and common sense. The consequences are serious. I mean, I don't know how people who are masking do it all day long, day after day. And I just want to say thank you for taking the stand. It's something that's serious. But now we're talking about vaccines. And the study by the, the one study by the CDC that was actually published by MSNBC showed that 74% of the people that were contacted COVID, 74% that got a vaccineee contacted COVID. So that shows me right there, that's a great sample for the United States. 74% of the people that are getting the vaccine. And I'll send, Tony, Anthony, I'll send you this stuff. And Phil, I'll send it to you as well.
Be happy to read it.
But thank you for taking the stand. I just want to say one thing about the Deschutes County Health Department. I got on the website and looked at what they're advocating. And I would highly urge you guys to tell them to look at things that keep your immune system strong. And with the statistics I've seen, that vaccines don't work and masking's ridiculous, they need to be looking at stuff that what keeps our immune system strong? Diet, nutrition, I mean, the list can go on and on. And I'll say anything like that up there, they need to do their own research. Guys need to bring on a naturopathic doctor as well, in my opinion. Just don't hire the science of medical doctors. So I'm going to encourage you to look at that. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Cluff.
Thank you so much. And we did ask next week, I want to hear about therapeutics. No one seems to have therapeutics. And surely there are some therapeutics that do work, but, you know, we don't, the public doesn't hear about them enough. So let's see. Dr. Fawcett from St. Charles is going to address that issue.
There's, there's vitamin D3. That's a, there's a lot of studies out there. It works. The Europeans have studied it. We in the States, there's a few people in the States that have done it. But vitamin D3 particularly is a big, shown to be a big help to prevent, as well as help people that have it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else willing to testify?
But I can attest to what he just said.
Okay.
Is that not on there?
Yep, not on.
And I got ivermectin.
If you want to join us on the microphone real quick. So yeah, just introduce yourself. Thank you very much for joining us.
My name's Lance Avery. I live here in Bend. And the 1st of July, I got COVID. So did my wife. And she works here in the building. And we knew about ivermectin, we knew about hydroxychloroquine, but we didn't know how to get it. Called the doc over here and they said, oh, no, you can't have that because if you, if, if we prescribe that and something happens to you, and I, I don't have time on this. I mean, it's not, it's not, I just knew that the vaccine was not something I wanted because they can't prove, well, it's not a vaccine, the shot, that I didn't want to put something in my body that didn't have any antibodies in it. And I wasn't sure about what all the outcome's going to be because nobody's given us a final say on if it's FDA-approved or whichever one it is. I'm sorry on that. But anyway, took the hydroxychloroquine or the, yeah, the ivermectin, and within a few days, I was feeling better. And I've just gone, how could this be? And they wouldn't get it. So I had to find a doctor elsewhere that sent it to the clinic, you know, through the pharmacy. And with the copay that we have, it was two bucks. If you buy it yourself, it's somewhere between 100 and 150 bucks is what they're charging for the, the product. But it works. So I'm living testimony. I'm 70 years old. And I have, I'm, I have faith in the, the, the science that works. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance.
So this is our citizen input for any items not on the agenda. Is there another request to speak here today? Is there anybody on Zoom using our Zoom technology and, or any phone numbers? Okay. So thank you very much for the testimony today. As we know, yeah, yesterday about midday, it looked like we were going to have the debate. As the local public health authority, governor has notified us that there'll be a press conference at 11 o'clock today, a statewide mandate for masks. There was a letter provided to us from the city of Bend asking us either mandate or strongly recommend. So I do want to acknowledge that there was, there were choices in here about what we were going to be doing. But at this time, yeah, the decision space has been, you know, brought to a state level. Are there any other comments? Any, I mean, does it say yesterday it looked like this was going to be a big decision point? No, it's not.
I guess I would just say that, you know, we, we did have the opportunity last week as the local public health authority to make a strong recommendation on, on masking. And we didn't do it at that time. And I, you know, I think what we're seeing is that the, the state will step in and exercise responsibility when local public health authorities aren't.
So acknowledging citizen input and direct emails to the commissioners, we do have received many, many emails. I do have a stack right here, so I'm not going to go through them individually. And very much it's just input on both sides of a mask mandate and, you know, no, no requirement for masks at this time. So as I say, the governor has taken the authority of a local public health authority away from all the counties at this point in time. You know, I, I do truly believe that, you know, any individual or family member, you know, can make the best choice for your family and be informed. Hospital capacity is an issue. So very, very dynamic time currently.
Yes, we had 132 new cases of, of COVID reported in Deschutes County just yesterday.
Okay, with that, with that, let's go to our next agenda item, which is consent agenda.
Oh, I do want to correct. There is an article in the bulletin today that says we have 40, approximately 40 cases. We have 32 today. We had 32 yesterday. We had 33 on Monday.
Are you referring to people in the hospital?
Yes, with COVID. And it was 32 last Friday. So I'm like, okay, I know my numbers. And when you have 32, you normally don't round up to 40, but it is at 32. I believe the most we've had in the hospital with COVID has been 61. And I know the hospital is overwhelmed. And it's, you know, it's definitely, it's a horrible time out there. There are 10.1 million jobs in America that are unfilled, including nursing, restaurants. I mean, everybody is impacted. And perhaps they could stop the, I know, the $300 a week is going to stop September 6th. Perhaps it's going to stop September 6th. But it seems like, you know, we've got to get more nursing help at this moment in time.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that extended unemployment benefits are not part of what's affecting our nursing shortage right now.
Yes, so at this time, consent agenda. So there's.
So move.
Second.
I'd like to thank Tony Williams for joining us on the Deschutes County Planning Commission. That's the land use decisions outside of the cities. And that's our, you know, sounding board and review board for land use. With that, call him for the vote, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. At this time, item number four, consideration of signature of document for PCC Solutions. I see Holly Harris is with us.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Holly Harris, Program Manager, Deschutes County Health Services. And I'm here today to request board signature for the contract that you should have in your packet for PPC Solutions, which is our security contract for the stabilization center, which is currently funded through our Impax grant through June 30th, 2022.
So this is 24 hours a day for the rest of this fiscal year?
Correct.
And it mentions, yeah. And I've, I've been to the facility many times. There's always one person onsite. So it's a, you know, really support for the, for the stabilization center employees and folks that are there. Any discussions?
Holly, I don't know the history on, on this contract and this service need. I mean, clearly, having security at stabilization center is important. I was wondering whether there was ever any consideration of using the sheriff's office or kind of partnering with the sheriff's office in that way since they were, since they're so close?
We did talk about that early on. And ultimately, it's much more expensive to go through the sheriff's office to use them. In addition, they're going to be in uniform. And we were really trying to kind of have a less law enforcement look about our security and have them be a little more unassuming. So that's, that's where we landed on it. And really, the cost was a huge driver as well.
Helpful to know. Thank you.
But I think the person that's there is indication of security of some sort. So I mean, there's some presence and feel of a security. And then also, yeah, public safety's within walking distance also.
It's true. And, and they're unarmed. Our security is completely unarmed, and we want them to stay that way. And that's a more difficult decision for law enforcement.
Great. So where's our motion?
I move approval and board signature of document number 2021-498, continuing our contract with PPC Solutions.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Holly.
Item number five, discussion of Community Development Department Building Safety, Environmental Soils Staffing Request. A lot of activity over there these days.
Indeed, there is.
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Pinner, Senior Management Analyst for Community Development. We are before you today to ask for two additional FTE and two lead pay designations. One FTE would be in our Building Safety Division, and it would be an additional plans examiner. You may recall that we were granted a new plans examiner in March. We're asking for a second. We have about 190 applications in pending examination. And so we're looking for a little bit more help in that area. We're also asking for a lead pay designation for a field inspector. That person would also, would help management with staff assignments and just some, some general workflows. And then we're also asking for a lead designation for a plans examiner to do similarly, the same process to assist management with assignments and meetings and code, code interpretations. And then during the budget process, you may recall that we talked, I briefly mentioned that we had a need for new FTE in environmental soils, but we were unclear at the time exactly what that might look like. And we would come back to the table to ask for that. And we're doing that today. And I suspect it's going to end up being an environmental health specialist one. Due to the educational requirements and then the state certification, we're probably going to end up having to hire a trainee, get them trained through the process, and then up and fully running. We've, with Senate Bill 391 passing, we're already experiencing site evaluations for ADUs. So that, that book of businesses is really ramping up, and we're hoping to get someone on board, trained, certified, before the wave of ADU applications show up, you know, in about a year.
You mean the 7,800 applications?
Correct.
Yes.
So, yeah, what does that look like real quick? So if somebody's asking for the ADU, it's probably just an educational step for, for the property and homeowner as much as, you know, because action isn't, it isn't time for action quite yet, but people are already looking into that. So.
Correct. They're doing their.
Huge educational effort.
Yeah, absolutely. That's my understanding. And we haven't received a lot, but, but we are starting to see.
Yeah, starting, yeah.
Commissioners, Nick Leewak, Community Development Director. Just two, two points, right? A lot of people are beginning to explore it. A lot of people are, we have some, some real estate companies and organizations beginning to ask for trainings of what does the new law look like? What is the timeframe for the county to consider adopting this new law into, into county code? And then when, what does implementation timeframe look like? So there's certainly a lot of interest. And so we're going to continue to experience that. Then the other point I would make is that the positions and the lead pay are all fully covered by existing fees. It's, it's not even, you know, just, it's not even a close call. They're clearly and easily paid for. So no additional fee increases or any other funds that are necessary to fund these. Existing fees fully cover the positions and the lead pay that we're requesting. Thank you.
That's great. Well, this is, yeah, the, the business of community development with the fee structure in place and the just vibrant activity happening right now. So I can see that we do have a good system in place to be able to cover these costs, you know, for the, the service provided to anybody coming in the door. So, and thank you very much for the, just like the electronic and remote support, as well as the front counter support. I mean, it, we need to do it all right now. So thank you so much.
And I actually have been talking to some realtors who had, you know, over two-acre MUA property listed to build your single residence. And I said to them, you know, you could also, in the future, hopefully, they can do an ADU too. So I just think it's really critical for more workforce housing in Deschutes County. You know, kind of you could plan it all together.
We hear that regularly, exactly. Thank you.
What I wanted to ask about or like my concern is what happens when the slowdown comes? So I mean, the way that, the way that CDD is funded, the way that it kind of proportions its staff right now is based on fee activity. And increasingly, we're learning and, and, you know, I'll, I'll ask this question about the next item too, or, you know, in relation to the next item too. There is a lot of really important work happening at CDD that doesn't generate fees. I mean, it, you know, even, even what you're talking about, about ADU education that's happening right now, there's a whole lot of demand for information about this, this topic before there's any fees showing up for, 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 you know, ADU applications. And so I'm, I'm fully supportive of this staffing increase, this capacity increase to meet, to meet needs. But I'm concerned about kind of the, the stability of our capacity to do work with the, you know, kind of sole dependency on, on, on fee activity. And I guess, I guess my question, you know, my, my question to the board is, you know, should we be thinking about diversifying the funding base for CDD so that as, you know, as, as fee activity goes up and goes down, we still have the capacity to, to get our work done, particularly long-range projects that, that may or may not generate fee activity for a long time?
Do you want me to begin, Sherry? Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm going to take these into two different pieces. One is what, what do we do and how do we plan for the, the cycles of development and economic activity we have in the county that directly impacts our business? And the three community development staff that you see and a fourth that was here previously, we all experienced the recession the last time and the, and the layoffs that we experienced, which were very, very challenging. So we, we make each decision based on the best available information we have at the time about current and projected future activity for business needs and business volumes. So to begin with, we're very conservative in our hiring. Number two, we have, we now have robust reserve funds to sustain that high level of customer service and, and activity through various economic cycles. Now, that's primarily going to be in the Building Safety Division. And Sherry can talk more about that. I think our reserve funds in Building Safety Division at this point are over $4 million, if I, if I'm, if I recall correctly. So we're able to sustain our operations through various economic cycles with, with Building Safety Division. And we believe our, our fees are sufficient there. We haven't increased those for a couple of cycles. And Building Safety Division and even the Environmental Soils Division adequately cover their costs. So that's all one piece. The other piece is, is long-range planning and even current planning. And that is always a, a real challenge. And we do provide really extraordinary services when people ask us to come and provide the educational outreach and the opportunities. Or as we'll discuss this morning in the next agenda topic with the Cannabis Advisory Panel, things come up. And what that really requires in the long-range planning section, and Peter can address this, I'm sure better than I can, is that we really have to adjust our workloads. What are the projects we're currently working on that we may need to delay in order to address issues that are, that, that come forward that we may not anticipate, such as the Cannabis Advisory Panel, which is, which is fine. We have the resources to accommodate that, but there are trade-offs and decisions and choices we need to make. Long-range planning, and again, Sherry and Peter can, I'm sure address this better than I can. But it's, the resources really match the requirements every year. There's not, there's not a lot of extra funds, if, if ever. The only time we may have that is if we have a, a particularly large building increase where some of the advanced planning fees can off, can provide additional resources. But, but we're usually pretty close in, in how we, how we budget for that. So certainly there are trade-offs and in, in long-range planning because there aren't the, there aren't the, the funds that we have available to conduct a lot of extra projects or it's just a prioritization process. Sherry or Peter, I don't know if you have anything to share with, with planning, with the funding?
I think that, that really explains.
Well, so I have, we do have an annual budget cycle. And from the General Fund of Deschutes County, there has been investments in long-range planning in the past. So that's the way to invest, you know, if the economy is slowing down and we, and that's the time to do the long-range planning, it could be a general, general fund subsidy for planning efforts. And I have been involved with that in the past. So that's where, you know, the, the building side of the house with its revenue and expenses, you know, may adjust if the economy's slowing down or building's slowing way down. So then there's just a natural attrition if there's one or two FTE. And as I say, I mean, I know for a fact Tom was in a spot where, you know, layoffs happened, 2007, eight, nine, maybe nine, whenever it was. But there was a point in time where layoffs were happening, but that was because of just the total stopping of, of building for a while.
Yeah, and that, that's the, that's the kind of single fund source dependency that I'm concerned about. And I, you know, during the budget cycle in June, you know, I saw, I saw us make a, you know, I think it was $150,000 investment in, you know, in capacity at the, at CDD, you know, for things like comprehensive planning. And I guess it's, it's very helpful to hear that there are reserves to kind of take the edges off the ramp ups and the ramps up and the ramps down. And, you know, I do see, I do see those general fund investments as important. I'm, I am curious whether, you know, during downturns in the past, we have kind of increased the level of general fund investment to kind of, to soften the blow and kind of, again, smooth the, smooth the edges of that off a little bit. And if so, I mean, if that's kind of the, the practice or the, the expectation, then that, that reduces my concern a little bit about what happens when the slowdown comes. So.
Well, I want to remind the community of what Nick Leewak did last year in May of 2020, when we had COVID just starting. And I believe you had, what, four vacancies, perhaps? A lot of vacancies in your department. And we were trying to find a way to cut back because we clearly did not know that housing was going to shoot to the moon. I know you were extremely conservative with your approach to your group, as was the road department, on what, what can we do to really make things financially more secure and conservative? And I really appreciated that. So I felt like, you know, by your ask today, I can see how busy we're going to be. And hopefully, if we can do those 7,800 ADUs, we definitely want to be able to step up and somehow get those accomplished before a couple of years goes by. So I, I appreciate your ask today, and I definitely appreciated your conservatism a year ago, May, when we were doing budget. And clearly, you, your, your team recognized that, okay, maybe it's time that we just, we don't fill those positions right now. We have, we need to wait and see really what happens. And we have to be very responsible to where you're, you know, what is happening. And as we saw this last year, you know, your activity level has gone up significantly.
So, and keeping that strong partnership with the building community, the realtors, you know, people are out there dreaming about what could be done. And we're the ones that implement the state land use system, you know, the lead time and the response time to anybody's questions and their plans. And I do get the calls. There's a few builders that know to call and say, hey, it's been more than two weeks and we're not used to this, which, which we, we hand off. But really, calibrating ourself to the activity out there is wonderful. Thank you for being, for being so responsive at this time also. So is there a motion? It's kind of a paragraph here today?
Okay. Let's see, what do we need? I move approval of one new building safety inspector, full-time employee, lead pay for plans examination and support to management, and one new lead pay designation for an existing building safety field inspector for inspection and support to management, and one new environmental health specialist FTE. And you said probably it would be a specialist one. Do we want to make that in our motion or leave that out?
I think you would leave that out.
Okay, that's too specific. All right.
I'll second. And was there another FTE in there? Is there, or two lead pays and?
So one building safety plans examiner, one environmental soils.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. So one inspector with lead pay. So that was the other one I was, because I knew there was four of them. Okay. Very good. Is there a motion? Second?
I second.
Okay. And that was the discussion, the clarity. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes. And our next.
Congratulations on your, how busy you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
And condolences.
Oh, no. No, this is exciting times. Item number six, planning division work plan update and long-range planning discussion.
That was, that struck a chord. That was laughter on that last comment, Commissioner, about our, our busy work volume. It is quite high. Anyway, good morning. I'm Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning Commissioner, Deschutes County Planning Manager, Commissioners. And here today to summarize a memorandum that's in your packet. The memorandum identifies every year, for those that are listening online, the community development department develops a work plan as it pertains to current and long-range planning projects. There's a public process for it in the spring, and ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges it. Before you today are projects for fiscal year 2021, 2022 that relate to long-range planning. And what staff has done, in addition to capturing all those work, work tasks, is we've identified what we believe are the Board's highest priorities. And this reflects an alignment based on previous conversations and work sessions we've had with the Board of County Commissioners, as well as recent outcomes with the state legislature. And the goal for today is to make sure that our understanding of the Board's priorities is actually in alignment with your goals and objectives. In table one, we, we do identify several projects that we think have elevated to the, kind of the focus for, for this fall. And some of those projects, which the Board is well aware of, but worth mentioning, relate to state legislation. And this includes what Commissioner Dare just mentioned, Senate Bill 391 pertaining to rural accessory dwelling units. We, if this is a high priority, we believe it's important for staff to begin engaging the Board, starting in the fall, to really flesh out some of the undefined elements in that legislation so that when the wildfire, statewide wildfire mapping is completed a year from now, we're in a position with the Board's direction to initiate those amendments. So there's some significant upfront work that needs to be done in, in coordination and in collaboration with the Board to make that a reality. Other legislation pertains to Senate Bill 762 wildfire mitigation, just monitoring that legislation as, as it pertains to what the rural advisory committees are doing, as it pertains to defining wildland urban interface. And of course, that's in coordination with the county forester. Nick LeLac, joining me, the community development director, mentioned the cannabis advisory panel. That was also due to special legislation that was signed last month and requires the, the convening of a panel that meets quarterly. This was not identified in our work plan, but nonetheless, we know it's, we, based on a previous meeting with the Board of County Commissioners in July, we understand that that's a priority and something that CDD should formulate and begin executing. And I'm in coordination with administration and other partnering departments. And I'm hoping to bring back a memorandum on Monday to talk about the cannabis advisory panel and specifically as it pertains to certain panelists for the Board's consideration. The other thing that's worth mentioning as well, and then I'll pause to make sure that we're, we are in alignment with the Board, because we do welcome, of course, your feedback and comments, is we're, we're well aware that there's conversations that the Board's having as it pertains to rural housing strategies, as it might align with American Recovery Act funds, ARPA funds. And those conversations are, we know are ongoing. And to the extent that those conversations elevate and there's, there's research or work that you want the community development department to undertake, we certainly can. It just means, again, working with you to reassign project, projects that are identified on our work plan to, again, to ensure that we're meeting your expectations. Before I close and turn it back over to, to the commission, I do want to recognize that the way that we're envisioning the Board's priorities, it does delay the comprehensive plan update. That's our observation in terms of that initial kickoff until spring 2022. Again, that's stemming in large part to Senate Bill 391 and the fact that we're also going to be executing a technical assistance, excuse me, a transportation growth management grant to allow us to engage the Tamalow community and sister country rural trails. That delay, there's some, there may be some other benefits to it as well. Just to plant the seed, we just received notice last week that the Department of Land Conservation and Development has just announced their technical assistance grants for the next two years. And it's an opportunity for, of course, we have to get Board of County Commissioners approval to do this. I'm just acknowledging that there, there's the potential for some additional outside funding to support the comprehensive plan update. And a delaying of the, the initiating of the comp plan update, what we're calling Deschutes 2040, to the spring could allow staff, again, with the Board's support, to explore some outside funding to help offset the, that multi-year process and conversation that we want to have with the community. So I'll pause there. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Nick. But again, the, my purpose is I want to make sure your, your staff, the long-range planning division, or long-range planning section, the goals that we've identified are aligned with yours so we can meet your expectations as we head into the, the fall months.
I, I think that the, the comprehensive plan update is extremely important. I, I appreciate the, the constraints and concerns you're operating under. But I, I, there will always be a reason, a reason why, oh, doing it in a few more months will be, you know, it'll be, there's a good, there's an upside to that because that by that time, we'll have this data or we'll have access to this opportunity. But, you know, to, to understand the, the needs of our community, the, the issues that we're facing to kind of have direction, I, I think that the sooner we do that, the better. So that, that makes me ask the question, not, you know, can you just do all this stuff and do the comp plan update sooner? But it makes me ask the question, is there, are there things on this priority list that we can push down on the priority list to, to, to free up the capacity to work on the comp plan update? You know, a couple of the ones I wanted to ask about were this evaluation of, of, you know, of hemp and hemp growing and what zones it, it would be allowed in. Given that basically nobody's growing hemp right now, and the, the, the market, there's, there's enough hemp that was grown in the last couple of years to, to flood the market for, for years to come, I, I'm, I'm just not sure how urgent that is. So I, you know, that's one thing I would ask is whether the, we could bump that down to, you know, a next year priority or something like that.
Can I say something about that, Commissioner Chang, if you don't mind? Last week, I was invited to go on a drug bust for a hemp operation that was really an outdoor marijuana operation. And I see that you're having a meeting tomorrow, and I, I believe Director LeLac, they perhaps would like you to, to go on one of those too. It was exactly what you thought they were going to do. They had all this growing outside. And honestly, to see the difference in the plants, the hemp plants had actually already budded. The marijuana plants were almost as tall, but they had not budded. It was a serious, serious, serious operation. And it was enlightening because you really, as what Commissioner Chang just said, there's very few hemp fields that you will see in our county at this moment in time. I was just thinking when I drove to town this morning, by Dayton Road, there used to be like a hemp field right by Highway 20, and then there were some other fields right, you know, west towards Sisters. And they're planting all, they've got grains going, they've got, you know, grasses growing. They're definitely not raising hemp now. So the ones that are left, what are they doing? And yes, so it was interesting to see that this, you would not have known it just driving by real fast, but once you look, there was clearly, it was a serious marijuana operation outs, outdoors. And when you think that the cartels have totally infiltrated southern Oregon, and we really don't want that to happen here. And not that, this was not a cartel operation, but it was a very neat and tidy operation.
Yeah, we 100% want to clamp down on black market marijuana production in our community. But there's a difference between CDD participating in code compliance activities and law enforcement pursuing, you know, illegal marijuana grow operations and, you know, doing this kind of higher level land use policy deliberation on what zones hemp will be allowed to, to be grown in. And I'm not, I'm definitely not saying that we should not continue to aggressively try to shut down a, a black market marijuana production through code, code compliance issues. I, what I'm saying is, this, this zoning question, I, you know, I just don't think has, you know, high urgency and high relevance right now. So that, that would be, you know, one proposal. I actually, in, as we're talking about the cannabis advisory panel, I, I actually have questions at, at this point, whether, whether that's something that we, that, that should have to be the responsibility of the CDD department. Because, you know, a big part of what's going to be discussed in that panel is how the money, how the tax revenue is going to be spent. It's, a lot of the land use questions around marijuana, you know, cannabis production are already settled. You know, we, we passed our, our, you know, we passed our opt-out measure in November. You know, in the coming weeks, we're going to get at the, you know, a time of operation and the inspection kind of frequency schedule for these things. So I, I, I really think a lot of the, a lot of CDD's kind of part in, in the cannabis debate is, is kind of tapering off. And what we'll have left is, is law enforcement questions, you know, you know, prevention, prevention questions and things like that. So, you know, one, one concept would be to move the, move responsibility for the cannabis advisory panel somewhere else. And if you ask me where a good place to put it would be, I, you know, I, I sort of wring my hands about that, but I mean, you know, conceivably, I could imagine us trying to, to assign staff from the admin department. To, Tom's looking at me like, are you serious? But I, I mean, it's, it's a cross-cutting issue for many, many departments and offices within the county. And so, you know, that's one argument for, for thinking about placing that there. So those are, those are two things.
Well, let's talk about that a little bit. So cannabis advisory panel, we asked for legislation from the state of Oregon to clarify the revenue of tax created here in our economy. This is what we received back. And yeah, maybe, maybe there's a way to do, not do it in community development. Yeah, I'm not opposed to that discussion. You know, all my experience with, with the marijuana and hemp industry is they, they just want to be integrated into the community, you know, get past this drug culture badge that they, they have from this history of United States of America. So it may be an interesting opportunity just to, yeah, pull it from CDD and just, you know, just have meetings, talk about, okay, if there's revenue here, what are we going to do about it? And then see what else comes up. And then when land use is crossed, you know, I mean, have a representation from the community development department. So that's an interesting idea.
Let me say, last year, I called the Department of Agriculture for the state of Oregon because they were allowing other labs to do the inspection and do the testing. And apparently, that's not working per my conversations with code enforcement. So I really feel that CDD needs to maintain their position here. Clearly, the operation that I was on, there were, there were serious problems. And there's, it's very specific on what the state had said. You need to go in six feet and you do your sample test there, and then you do another sample test. And this operation had put one plant outside in front of a greenhouse, and that's what the lab was going to test. So that's, that's really not following the law, and I do believe CDD has the wherewithal to know that.
And again, I absolutely think that the, the code compliance group within CDD needs to be very actively engaged in, in helping us shut down illegal marijuana production. I just, I, I just, again, if we're talking about what the functions of this cannabis advisory panel are, they're largely around how is this money, you know, how is this tax revenue going to be expended? And that's getting more, you know, code compliance is a part of it, but, you know, law enforcement and sheriff's deputies are a part of that. And, you know, the, the health department and prevention services are a part of that as well. So I really think it's a, it is a cross-cutting county panel. And we, we could continue to maintain that at CDD, or, you know, we could place it somewhere else. And, and I, you know, my big concern today on this agenda item is how do we, how do we free up capacity within, within the CDD department so that they can do some of the important long-range projects that we need them to do?
Well, I'd be supportive of, you know, maybe not making that hard decision today, but what else could we be doing with cannabis advisory panel? What would it look like to, you know, not have CDD think of that as a project of the department? Obviously, you'd be at the table, there'd be participation, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we can, if we can look at that in the future, that, that would be great.
Commissioners, one of the opportunities is to hire a consultant or a facilitator for the cannabis advisory panel, which is what we did with the marijuana advisory committee several years ago. And I think CDD managed that, but that certainly helped add capacity. And I think the Board or administration may have paid for the consulting. I think it was something to the tune of $20,000 for seven meetings, and, and that was an adequate amount to, to cover that process. So that's one, one idea that, to consider adding capacity to CDD or administration or whomever may.
So the revenue's going down, we're going to be talking about a declining revenue source and then spending money to manage it.
Well, to spend $20,000 to get $180,000, it is what it is.
Well, as I say, that's an idea that I'm generally supportive. How else could we do this? I would like to take that as just a to-do item from today, because I don't know how, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to give real hard direction on that right now.
Yeah, yeah, but to be continued on there. The one other piece I wanted to touch on was there is this, there's this ongoing research into this natural resource stewardship position. And instead of that being in our, in our workload column, you know, like, we got to research this thing, we got to, you know, develop a thoughtful plan for it, we could be actually putting that into our capacity column if we just decided to go ahead and do it. And, and. And, you know, hire a person, you know, identify, you know, a scope of work for them, and then instead, again, instead of it being a liability, we got to, we got to research this further, it becomes, we have another person to do this, this, and this thing in our long-range, in our long-range planning work column. And so.
So I would like to, yeah, respond to that too. I don't see that at all. I think, you know, if we're going to add capacity, let's add capacity, but not put, have somebody with a hat saying, I'm from natural resources and I'm here to provide the view of nat-, you know, protecting something, you know, so I don't want to put too much definition in what I'm saying there. So I mean, I support the idea of adding capacity if it's the right thing to do, but not a specific position referring to natural resources, because it's part of what we do. I mean, this is statewide land use, we have layers of this through everything, so I just don't see a staff person having that hat.
Fair enough. But basically, the idea of adding additional capacity, you know, is that if we could add, if we could add funds from transient room tax revenues, or the general fund, or some other place, is, you know, you know, the labor market conditions being what they are, is it even feasible, you know, if you had more dollars to add some additional capacity to alleviate some of the kind of, you know, triage-type decisions we have to make about, about what we're going to get done and what we're not going to get done?
So then it brings up the concept of kind of an org chart of, you know, what, how does the capacity get managed? And, you know, if there was, I guess, you know, is there branches in the planning department that, you know, maybe just looking at the org chart of the organization, say, oh man, if we had one more person here, we could add a few projects? So just for information.
Yeah, as the, it's noted in the memorandum, our long-range planning staff is small. We have a senior planner and two associate planners and a transportation planner that is basically, Peter Russell's time is split 50/50 in both current and long-range planning. And the demands that, you know, we are an accountable planning division and long-range planning section. The projects that are listed for this fiscal year, many of them are significant. And I want us to go, want to go back to Senate Bill 391. That is a significant topic, and that will require regular coordination with this board to help define many of the elements pertaining to, you know, there's some low-hanging issues that are relatively easy to find pertaining to setbacks, and what constitutes an accessory structure within 100 feet of the primary dwelling. But there are, there are some significant issues that we're going to, that are likely required some direction from the board to coordinate with rural fire protection districts and the road department pertaining to what constitutes safe access, what constitutes safe evacuation routes, what constitutes staging areas, you know, procedurally, as Tanya Saltzman, our senior planner, brought up. Again, this is just to whet the appetite and let you know that this is a real priority, that it's, it's going to require this level of communication or coordination, is, you know, is the board interested in a ministerial, with the amendments, are they interested in a ministerial decision? What does that mean? People come in, they meet the clear and objective criteria, and it's something that gets into our queue and can be approved relatively quickly versus elements in the amendments that have discretion, that's a limited land use decision. And then you're, that's going to require an administrative decision. And, you know, if there's ambiguity there or room for interpretation, of course, it can, it can invite differences of opinion, which then can elevate it to hearings officers, the Board of County Commissioners, ultimately, Land Use Board of Appeals. So similar to the other topics today, the cannabis advisory panel, what constitutes hemp, or how hemp relates to our work program, the natural restorship position, we can come, we plan on coming back and debriefing you on these individual issues so that the board can make informed direction to staff. But Senate Bill 391 is significant, and as all of us know, on many of these work projects now and in the past, Deschutes County often is the front end of this process. We are leading this conversation. Other counties are, for various reasons, are not mobilizing like we are. So we have just ourselves to ask these questions, to collaborate and coordinate, so we can ensure that what, we're meeting the board's expectations, if they do want to, again, if you want this, these amendments to be initiated ideally by next summer, we're in a position in the spring to come back to you and say, okay, per your direction, here's what we've prepared, and we're ready to go to initiate amendments, once we get that wildfire, state wildfire map process completed. So I use that as an example, that it's, it's going to take some significant capacity. And there's other projects, you know, that I could, that I could highlight if it's beneficial, that just absorbs our capacity right now for the next several months, irrespective of the cannabis advisory panel. We've got some large projects that are going to require significant efforts from our staff to engage the community accordingly.
Peter, originally, I thought it would be really outstanding to have pre-approved plans for someone to come right in to our, you know, to the counter and, hey, I want to build a 750 square foot ADU, or 800 or 900, 900 being the maximum. Clearly, that's, that's housing that could, you know, a couple of people could be living in 900 square feet. It's really quite remarkable. And I believe someone from your department told me that actually, Los Angeles County has done that same thing. They already have those pre-approved plans. Now, I realize that's Southern California, but they have a significant fire danger there. It's different, you know, they've got the winds, which are horrific at times, but we can have our winds here now too. So anyway, that's just something that I know is going to take time, and you're going to want to do it right. But it's really, to make it easier for people that are building, you know, especially if they've already had their house and now they're going to, they've never built a house, but they're going to do something, it, you know, it takes, you want to have confidence that your plans are going to be well thought out, and they're going to be easy to do, and you're going to want to know what your costs are. So, you know, definitely plans with costs, because I was just taking like $350 a square foot tight now. It's significant investment if you have to put that much money into that, that structure, even at 900 square feet.
Well, I don't think it's too far of a stretch to think we may need more FTE there in the next couple of years.
Yeah, I think that was a, that example is, you know, it's a perfect example to, it's a perfect example of how, when new legislature, legislation is passed, it needs to be translated to the ground. And we are more, Deschutes County is more motivated than any other county in the state to see that legislation operationalized so we can use it and we can, we can build ADUs. And, but there's a cost that comes with that. I mean, I'm guessing the reason that the other counties aren't jumping, aren't jumping on this is that they're waiting for us to figure it all out. And while we're, while we're figuring it all out, we are, we're using resources without generating any permit, you know, any permit application activity or fees. And I do think that that's, you know, if, if we're highly motivated to get these ADUs out on, you know, out on the ground, and it takes that process of translating legislation to, you know, practical development guidelines for our community, then in my mind, that's an investment, you know? When, when, when people build those ADUs, A, it's going to, it will help our regional housing supply. And B, it'll, those funds will come back to us over time in the form of increased property taxes. So I think that's a, it's a very, we have a very good argument to increase capacity, long-range planning capacity specifically, you know, with that example and, you know, with this, you know, look at the work plan in front of us.
Commissioner Derr, what are your thoughts now that we're generally proposing maybe to expand the department a little bit?
More than we did today?
Uh, yeah, this is long-range planning. This is basically the other side of the house.
So that we can get those ADUs out on the ground.
And you're saying we really need someone today to do that, Peter?
Well, I mean, that wasn't the proposal in front of us, but we're starting to come to that conclusion.
Commissioners. I was going to say, Commissioners, we can return with a proposal for adding capacity for long-range planning. And we really appreciate the conversation with capacity, because so much of what we do in Deschutes County is different than in other counties, as you already know. And we have really dynamic cities, and we allocate significant staffing resources to coordinating with those cities, in addition to the projects we're working on to address a whole host of issues. So that's, that's really, really an important topic. We also appreciate the $150,000 that the board authorized for the comprehensive plan update. Just so you know, we plan to utilize that for consultants, because we don't have that capacity on staff. And then the Transportation Growth Management Grant, $75,000, also hiring consultants to help us with those projects, because, so we are managing projects, we're also performing projects, so capacity is a continuous issue. So we'll return with a proposal if that's.
And to be, if I may, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just to be clear, we didn't come, we didn't come here with the expectation that we were finessing the need for more staff. The key was to identify, well, it's an opportunity, and as both Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Adair know, we often check in about our work plan, because we were a dynamic community and issues elevate organically that require check-ins with the board. One, it was just to recap what's on our work plan for this fiscal year, but also to identify those projects that we see are separating. And whether you, you know, even if you, if there's support for exploring additional staff, we still need to come to the board and make sure that we're identifying your priority, prioritized projects. And today, just to be clear, we believe, our understanding is Senate Bill 391 is a significant project, and we are in a position to prioritize that project for execution. It just means other projects, like the comprehensive plan update, delay until the spring. And keep in mind as well, again, not to, not to predetermine an outcome for additional staff, but it will take us several months to hire somebody and bring them on board. So it's not a turnkey situation where we immediately have the bandwidth to focus in on something that might be slipping, to put it back, back in the queue.
So, and I think this is in a five to 10-year horizon. I mean, I think, you know, to start, to build into this capacity, to do this planning effort, to see people implement ADUs on the ground, to see the changes on the ground, you know, the implications of that, yeah, five years from now, we may be still be in the thick of it. And even if things are going to slow down, I don't know that we're going to be done with this wave of activity in 10 years. So that's just what I'm deducing, as I'm hearing the big picture.
And even if this only results in capacity increases in a few months, that, to me, is a little bit more insurance that the comp plan update won't have to slip another three months. So I mean, and I think, I hope I speak for the board. You know, we know that you didn't come here angling for additional capacity. You came here to revisit the work plan with us and tell us about the real capacity constraints that you have to get everything done on that list. And I very much appreciate that.
One question about comprehensive plan, what's the, what's the estimated timeframe for a comprehensive plan effort?
It's probably 18 months to complete. And we are planning, we are, and Peter's already working on the RFP and the consultant hiring process, which we would complete this fall. And then often, we wouldn't want to engage the public as a kickoff, of course, over the holidays or just at the start of the new year. That, hence, we kind of thought about, it's either in the fall or it's really early spring. But it's about an 18-month completion project.
Yeah, so I'm comfortable having it start next year with preparation, because then, you know, basically, we're, we're saying 18 months, but we're already starting on it six months earlier, so it's going to be two years from, we're talking about it now, we're going to actively do it in the spring instead of the fall.
And of course, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we would, we would come back and summarize the RFP for you, summarize the timeline, you know, but I think putting it a little more context, you know, you're talking about a 12-month community conversation.
Yeah.
Identifying those, you know, new vision statement, updating background and existing conditions, revisiting goals and policies. And, and then after that robust, call it 10 to 12-month period, then you're, you're drafting the comprehensive plan in there, you're going through the adoption process. So, but it is worth underscoring that, you know, relying on a consultant who thinks about the best ways to engage our community, both, both interactively, remotely, and in person, and, you know, tackling the multitude of issues that our county faces, you know, will benefit by that level of expertise. And they have, you know, they're, they're thinking about citizen involvement and community and stakeholder involvement in ways that we don't on, we, that we're not, they have that heightened skill set that ours may be a little rough around the edges, just because we don't do it on a regular basis.
And then comprehensive plan, I'm just thinking the scope of what we're talking about, that's, just like you said, the comprehensive plan policies, the whole document, but community meetings.
Absolutely.
Alfalfa and Brothers and Tumalo and Terrebonne, you know, and then people in the perimeter of all the cities, I mean, that's going to be a very engaging process.
And then it informs, you know, we, I mean, again, not to jump ahead, but it'd be a separate, could be a separate document if the board was supportive of it, just to plant a seed for your contemplation over time, is, there could be a separate kind of implementation strategy, because the goals and the policies are going to identify other opportunities for how do we implement the comprehensive plan for the next 20 years? And it informs, you know, this very, you know, a work plan so that the community and ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners can identify, you know, we want CDD in partnership with other departments in Deschutes County and in the, in the private sector to tackle these, these specific issues. So it's, it provides that roadmap with some real specificity about how we collaboratively as a community take on some of our pressing land use issues and opportunities.
The agricultural irrigation on top of destination resorts and recreational opportunities and wildlife, whoa.
Complicated.
But yeah, so I'm not, yeah, let's, let's put the expectation out to next spring is, that's not a problem for myself.
But I do want to thank you for putting 391 number one. Clearly, with our lack of housing, the fact that when the hospital is hiring people, they may have to put them up in a hotel, this is, this is not sustainable. And just think how helpful it will be for all those people in our community to have this housing available. Apparently, Representative Zika may be working on expanding that 100-foot to maybe 150, 200 feet, which in a good sense will perhaps legalize some of our existing ADUs that weren't built right next to the main residence, that still fit all the other parameters. So, you know, I, but I so appreciate, and I would so hope that we could get this done faster, you know, than waiting three years to start building our first legal ADU. So let's hope the state can do their part, the 762 can happen.
Yes, and Commissioner, our plan is to come, come back late, I don't think it'll be, we'll shoot for late August, but it'll likely be early September, where we'll begin that coordination with the board to start defining those certain parameters. And as I mentioned earlier, for the time being, the community development department will come back, I'm shooting for a memorandum on Monday to continue the conversation about the cannabis advisory panel. So we don't stop with this conversation, we'll continue to collaborate with the board. And there's a couple items, as noted in this memorandum, where in early September, we'll have some one-on-one meetings with the board as it pertains to the stewardship position and other projects as well. So we do appreciate your time, and of course, your, your direction is what we seek. We don't, we want to make sure, again, that we're always in, as much as we can, be lockstep in alignment with what the board's goals and objectives are for, for long-range planning projects.
So a couple other items, so RV opportunities, remember, this is one of the things that I'm really passionate about right now, and I think of it as a low-barrier and high-barrier RVs opportunities. As in, if we have a managed camp, it could be referred to as a low-barrier RV opportunity, and a high-barrier version of that would be private campgrounds, you know, you, please, please join us, and if you pay your fees and aren't disruptive, this is a great short-term living opportunity. So whatever that means, so just RV opportunities in the big picture. Forest Service, BLM are, you know, trying to scratch their heads about what, could there be something done there? And then, as I say, long-range planning, think about it, we naturally are a place where people are coming for the summer season and maybe going to Southern, Southern United States for a winter season. It's a natural thing that we could do a lot more of. And you can take that in all kinds of directions, but yeah.
Yeah, all three, all three land uses that were addressed by that staff memo, campgrounds, RV parks, and mobile home parks are definitely, still of great interest. And, you know, I would hope if we can, if we can create a little bit more capacity in long-range planning, those are, those are things that we could keep someone focused on.
Yeah, I think adding any capacity in long range just to deal with housing issues. Coordination with Kristi Bollinger with property, addressing all of these issues. Senate Bill 391, among other issues, is certainly a comprehensive position just in CDD now.
So I've got a few more items. You kind of introduced us to Table 1, and we jumped around a little bit. So looking at Table 2, City of La Pine Coordination. The status is TGM grant application, and we're going to talk about it in September or October. I think we, at the Board level, had given direction, and I'm making sure we're on the same page, that let's not wait for a response from TGM. Let's assume that if that resource is there or is there or not, we got to do, we can do something. There's market pressure for us to proceed. So it'd just be a shame if we're standing by. And so, and let me know what this looks like from your point of view. It'd be a shame if we're waiting for that TGM grant because I don't, that's not a driver of this project. You know, that the new neighborhood, planning, big picture, as I say, we should just start. But this is another thing on the plate, though. So what does that look like when I, and is there support like that? I mean, I think we had talked about this generally. Would we wait for the TGM grant and think that that money is going to be the trigger for us to proceed or?
My, my key concern was not, was not spending money that's, that we can't claim reimbursement for if we get the grant.
Yep, understood, yeah, we talked about that in the past, so, but either.
We can coordinate around grant deadlines.
But if we don't get a TGM grant, I mean, that's, that's the.
I mean, I think it's, we can, we can be doing stuff like right now, like writing up the request for proposal. I mean, you can have everything ready to go and then just add money when either a grant comes through or we decide to obligate county funds.
It's August 11th, right? And we're going to find out what, September, according to our memo, if we do get the grant. And at that moment in time, if we don't get it, I would believe we'd, we'd want to be ready to go forward even if we didn't get it. So, yeah.
But a lot of that is.
Support for preparation.
Yeah, but a lot of that is work, is that work that we would do to prepare a solicitation for a contractor to do that? Or is that work that the city would do, or is it sort of a joint project or?
Good question. It's really a joint project because it's the city's jurisdiction, it's a county-owned property. And then CDD worked, it's kind of like the Cannabis Advisory Panel. We're trying to facilitate and keep the process moving, but this is really going to be in kind of Christie, Christie's realm with the property management. But CDD is involved because the money goes to the groundwater partnership fund. So we're happy to play as large or as small as a role, but we don't want to get in front of anybody either. So we just, Peter, Kristi and I just went to La Pine last week and conducted some great site visits. I know she was going to coordinate with Greg on some funding opportunities. And so we are, the three of, four of us are thinking about where do we go next? And in very short order, but I think Commissioner Chang, you're exactly right. We can begin the process right now to create that RFP for the master plan developer or the consultant to help us with that process.
Yeah, so I guess the, just the status, let's not refer to it as standing by for TGM grants. So, you know, because, yeah, whatever we can do. And I support, you know, we know there's something coming, so. So then another item I have is the Natural Resource Stewardship Position. As I say, I'm not supportive of thinking that we would hire another person with that hat on. It's part of our efforts already. So my point is I wouldn't even need to see that on the table anymore. I don't know if that's.
I'm okay with that. I mean, I think there are, there are specific issues that people were putting into this bin that will continue to be there. But if we, you know, if we're, if we're willing to increase capacity at CDD long-range planning generally, I believe that those, those things will be addressed. You know, for example, this, you know, I was picturing this person in part, you know, helping, kind of develop this concept of a county-operated campground on the north end of town. And, you know, whether that capacity is placed at CDD or in the property group or, you know, somewhere else, I definitely, I've kind of been standing by, waiting to, you know, ask, you know, some county staff to work on that. But, you know, I want to see the capacity created to explore that concept.
So, and Commissioner Adair, please share. So Natural Resource Stewardship Position is in the table, and I'm just asking for it to be removed.
Right, it could move, yeah, to, I don't know, number three as far as I'm concerned. At this moment in time, I do believe that the comprehensive plan update is more important.
Well, and I'm proposing to just remove it, so.
Remove it completely.
Yeah, I mean, the issues that are proposed, you know, they're all, they're there, we know they're there. So hiring somebody to be that keeper of issues in the natural resources world, I don't know that. I mean, especially if we only have a few, you know, this is long-range planning. It just doesn't seem to be the right balance of staff to think that we would have a natural resources person. And I just envision it as reminding the other staff about natural resource issues. It just, that's the way my brain goes.
I mean, similar, again, we know what, we know some of the things that are in that bin right now. And we are talking about some of them being covered by long-range planners in the future. I also, just knowing that there are things in that bin that are better suited for our natural resource shop, you know, Ed and Boone, or our property shop, you know, Kristi and Deborah, to be working on. And that, knowing that those two groups are also maxed out, I do, I do want us to walk away from here. If we're taking this out of, you know, off of here, I do want us to walk away, you know, with the recognition that there may be capacity additions that are needed in those two areas as well.
And we already concluded that for planning.
Right, but planning, CDD was where kind of the analysis and kind of the visioning for that position was, you know, was being held or where it was occurring. But it, you know, we need the capacity across all three of those groups to address some of the things that are in that bin. And I know it's, it's a, it's a much bigger deal to talk about taking a two-person shop and adding a third person. But I do want us to think about the capacity needs in those other, of those other two shops. And, you know, if we're, if we do acknowledge that the things that we're, that we are putting into that bin are real valid needs, then we need to think about capacity across all three.
So this is ongoing long-range planning projects. And it's a line item that says Natural Resource Stewardship Position, like an FTE. So as I say, I mean, if there's a group of issues, in the summary is what I'm looking at, a group of issues to keep track of, maybe that's what we do, but we don't refer to it as a possible future position. So maybe, maybe we say Natural Resource Stewardship, you know, capacity or, you know, and just leave it more generic than.
Yeah, capacity might be a better point.
Yeah, maybe, because, I mean, yeah.
It will be interesting to see what the results are from the original study, that we haven't heard those results yet. How many deer do we still have, right? Would love to know that. Just saw my first doe with triplets, and it wasn't in Deschutes County. But I did see a doe with one fawn right by my house. So, you know, it's, I'd just really like to know what, what those numbers are going to come out as. And then, so we're going to know clearly what's happening out there. You know, what's the cougar population done? And are they impacting the amount of deer that are in Deschutes County? Or is it, are they all being hit on the road? Because I see a lot of that happening.
So, yeah, that's all I had. I have a couple of other underlying items, but no questions. Good discussion today.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Are we still, are we still streaming, video streaming at this right now?
Okay.
Yes.
Next item, number seven, American Rescue Plan Planning, or Plan Funding Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Municipal Officer. Just a couple of things for today. We have a brief, we have an update from Health Services on temporary staff, staffing request for response and recovery efforts due to the COVID pandemic. And following that, we'll actually be able to spend some time going through the list. And I'll give you a follow-up of what's coming up in the next few weeks as well. But I'm going to, I'm going to turn that over to folks here at Health Services so that they can walk through the proposal with you.
Great. So Health Services, details on $2 million temporary staffing response and recovery efforts requests. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want, just for the record, I want to note that I'm wearing a jacket, which I usually don't.
Usually don't wear a jacket.
I was going to wear a tie as well, but I thought it would be too formal. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nahat Sadra Zodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I'm joined by.
I'm Cheryl Smallman. I'm the Business Officer for Health Services.
And also online, we have Dr. George Conway, Health Administrator for Health Services, and Emily Freeland, who is our Health Services Supervisor overseeing the COVID response, which is within the Advancement and Protection Section in the Public Health Division. So I'm going to even take this off of Vibe and hope there's no emergency coming in because it's very distracting. So Commissioners, Health Services, may I start?
Yes, please.
Health Services is requesting $2 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds to be earmarked to support temporary staffing of key COVID response and recovery efforts. There's currently no identified funding source in Health Services. And as such, it is, we are diverting funds originally approved by your good selves and Oregon Health Authority that were intended to support foundational positions within the department. These are positioned like Emily Freeland, Chris Ahinegi, and others who then oversee the temporary staff capacity. These funds will ensure continued department capacity in order to assure high standards around containment, school vaccine rollout, call center, community outreach, and ability, and an ability to scale up response in the likely event of increased cases, which is not likely anymore. It is, in fact, happening, we're in the midst of it, especially due to this Delta variant, which is right now estimated to be eight or nine out of 10 cases. This request frankly maintains current capacity. And even within that capacity, we're prioritizing our efforts. Let me hand over to Cheryl for additional numerical information.
Sure. I thought it would be pertinent to talk about how we came up with that $2 million estimate. We are looking at a phased-down approach, and that's where you see this bulleted tiered outline. So the $2 million assumes that we are at current capacity of our temporary staff. And temporary staff, where the definition is those staff that we're hiring through a temp agency, which is different than limited-duration staff in the department. So current capacity through the end of September, we're then assuming a reduction down to 75% of current capacity through the end of this calendar year. Then another tier down of 50% of current capacity for the second half of the fiscal year, so January through June. And then at 25% of the current capacity for the year, June 20, the end of June of 2022 to the end of June of 2023.
I have a question, Cheryl, on this memo. Are you talking 23 staff and the 16 call center staff? Is it both of those numbers together or?
Yes, both of those numbers together.
So we're talking about 39 individuals that you're saying we need to fund 100% till September 2021?
Just to clarify, Commissioner, if you were talking about the temporary positions, right?
The temporary.
Yeah, these positions, even though the numbers are in the high 30s, 40s, they're actually not all working part-time. They're not all working full-time. So we have some staff working maybe two, three hours due to their family situation, some working 10, 15 hours. And majority of them, I would say, are working part-time because of their family circumstances. So the numbers don't really necessarily reflect the capacity.
And I believe that the latest count of our temporary staff was about 50.
Fifty.
As of last week, which includes outreach staff, it includes.
Yeah, so we have people staffing call center, we have people supporting wraparound services. We have a couple of people supporting vaccination efforts, even though frankly, our community partners are doing most of the heavy lifting in that area. But we are obligated based on the equity funds we receive to close the gap in terms of disparities that we're facing in vaccination rates. And then we have now shifted a number of staff to help with containment efforts. So the numbers are between 40 and 50, but like I said, not all of them, most of them actually are not working full-time. And I see Emily is on camera, so she, I don't know if she wants to weigh in, if you allow her, Commissioners, or?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Emily.
So I would just add that, you know, when I think about staffing and doing this, as our numbers go down, we don't fill people's time just to have them on staff. We, you know, we'll cut everybody's hours back based on the need at the time. So like right now, of course, we're surging, and most of our staff are working to their capacity, whether that be 32 hours or 40 hours or somewhere in there. But when our numbers were down, we cut hours across the board. And we're actually really lucky to have a lot of staff that were willing to just take time off so they weren't working. But weighing it out like that gives us the ability that when we do search, pull everyone back. And we have those trained staff, which it really does take a lot of time and effort to train staff really well. And we have that backlog bench so we can pull them back and increase their hours when we need them. I would just say that some organizations have not done that. And now when they're surging, they don't have anyone to increase their hours. So we've been really lucky to be able to hold on to our staff and we, you know, do our best to minimize costs whenever we can in hours, but utilize those staff in a way that really makes sense and is helpful, whether it's, you know, case investigation and calling all those cases and educating them, doing outreach, supporting our businesses, all those questions that come in. How do we handle cases? How do we protect our other staff? All the staff that do help with wraparound support, supporting the school cases, there's lots of work that's being done. And we can utilize staff in a way that makes the most sense to get all of these, you know, requirements completed, but also support our community when they are starting to, you know, really, I would say, panic a bit in a lot of these situations.
Emily, when you're talking about these people who are flexing kind of based on caseloads or, you know, case numbers, are you talking about the temporary, the temporary staff? Or is that, I mean, are permanent county health services staff like also flexing like, oh, I can do my real job now? And, you know, now there's a lot of COVID, I'm getting sucked into, you know, more and more COVID work on a given week?
So what I'm talking about is really those temporary staff. So the people that we have hired, the hourly staff that are hired through the temp agency, we're able to utilize them for containment efforts and whatever makes the most sense at the time. Like what those needs are and how we can see those needs in our community and reacting to those needs for containment.
Now, Commissioner, if I may add to your question, though, frankly, even that capacity is limited because we did have some turnover, people, there are multiple jobs available. is limited, because we did have some turnover, people, there are multiple jobs available, people are applying for them, so they're leaving, we have to recruit additional temps and train them, that takes time. However, there is this cadre of staff who have regular jobs that we tap into to close the gap. So, for example, I was speaking with Pamela and Tony a couple of days ago about diverting three, four nurses who have already been trained in this area to do, provide additional support for Emily's team for containment efforts.
Right.
But that's really disruptive, frankly, as you can imagine. Now, they have to call all of their clients and tell them, hey, we, or the clients that they're seeing at that moment, that, hey, we cannot provide services for you right now, or for the next couple of weeks, we have to do this other thing, and it really disrupts the support and services that we provide for our committee members.
Helpful to know, thank you.
So, with your memo, you mentioned minimum health request for six months at $700,000, and there's a $2 million ask, too, to get, so the $2 million ask is to get to June 2023, correct?
Correct.
That whole picture? So, I mean, I'm very comfortable investing, and if we can do it with pieces like this, $700,000 seems to be a great number for me at this time. We wanna keep those resources out there, and thank you very much for explaining how we're kind of dialing them up and down, and we have that, that ability, which is wonderful at this point in time. So, just, you know, trying to put direction to what we're being asked today.
And I feel really badly saying this today, but the fact that someone I personally know was called by four different people from the department and told on the same day that she was COVID positive, really, I'm wondering how, you know, how we really have to be exact, and I do believe that the positive person should be called, should be notified, told what they should do, what their critics, you know, they should, we should definitely have a conversation with them. But how this individual was called four times by our Health Department is a bit discouraging. And then originally, we were talking about contact tracing, and we'd find out, and then we'd call other people, and I, I don't believe that we really have the wherewithal to do that, do we, Emily? I mean, don't you just contact the positive person, tell them, hey, you're positive, you need to do this, and this, and this? Do you call anyone else for, for them that they've been in contact with?
So, it really depends on the situation. We always, we have to do case investigation before we can do contact tracing regardless, right? So, our priority is always to call the case, educate them, talk with them who they were around, and then we reach out very strategically depending on the situation. So, some people do have contacts that they don't feel comfortable notifying, and we handle that. So, then our contact tracers would call those people. That's frankly, a very small amount of the time that we spend, and it takes a little time to do that. So, we get the information from the person. A lot of our efforts go into contacting businesses, schools, childcares, and helping them work through the fact that the positive case was there. So, a lot of our efforts also go there, because there's more containment efforts, and you can get more, you know, if I can talk to a business or a daycare and explain to them who was exposed, what the minimum requirements are for them as far as keeping people out so we can stop the spread within that entity, that's really what we focus on. So, we focus on calling every case and educating them, and then giving them the information that they can share with their close contacts, their family members, their household members, and then also focusing our efforts on these other entities where we can help stop the spread. And there's just a lot of questions. It seems like it would be a really straightforward process by this time, but every situation is different, and it's nuanced. And, you know, if I talk to a business owner at a restaurant, I can really help them work through, okay, what do you need to do, and who needs to stay home so you can stop the spread, and who's able to continue working so you have the least effect on the business, and they can continue operating. So, we really focus on that as kind of our prioritization.
Yeah, and...
I don't know if that answers your question specifically.
And Emily, I think, I think you're kind of touching on both normal circumstances as well as times where we're, we're employing surge modality. And Commissioner, there, I really do want to acknowledge this experience that the committee member had with multiple phone calls, it's really unfortunate. I also want to acknowledge that vast majority of the experiences that our committee members have typically is with dignity and with respect. Literally thousands of phone calls we've made and reached out have been to the benefit of our committee members, and it's still unfortunate that we couldn't get this one particular situation right. So, thank you for raising that.
Oh, no, she, every call was with dignity, that wasn't the problem. It was, the problem was she was called four times. You know, she said everyone was very nice, but she, you know, she went, why am I continually called, you know, and, you know, she, she got the message initially, but everyone was lovely.
Yeah.
That wasn't the problem.
Certainly, it's a lesson learned, and we, we will make sure to minimize the contacts, and importantly, make sure that those exchanges and experiences are done in a Deshute way, which is with dignity and respect.
So, one of the primary purposes of the American Rescue Plan was to help us contain COVID, to respond to COVID, and many of the other things that we have considered so far in terms of ARPA investments have been more recovery-oriented. And so, to me, given that the Delta variant is surging in our community right now, yesterday, we had over 130 cases, new cases reported in Deshutes County, this seems like an extremely appropriate use of American Rescue Plan funds, and I just wanted to signal that I am, I'm supportive of this request.
Well, and different than cities, we are the local public health authority, so having these dollars available to invest in the population health for everybody is, you know, an honor and a privilege. So, I mean, this is a great spot to be. So, as I say, I'm very comfortable if we, let's proceed. As I say, I'm proposing a $700,000 amount. I know that, you know, a couple, six months from now, we'll be talking about it again, but it'll, we'll see what the world looks like at that point in time, too.
Commissioner, if I may just frame this in the right way so that later there's no misunderstanding, you know, with case numbers, obviously, there are ancillary support that also go with it, like wraparound services, isolation hotels, things of that nature, and we want to be, we want to ensure that we do this the right way. So, it's about containment, outreach, wraparound services, continuing our efforts to make sure that we are reaching the most vulnerable with vaccination, maybe with the school rollout. We need to also support the school districts to do vaccination. So, we're hoping to be flexible with these funds in terms of our collective COVID support and response.
Well, and my goal is to know more, just like I've mentioned, reached out to you, you know, the contact tracing, ride-along concept, understanding numbers a little bit more, understanding the, the data systems behind this. So, that's my next step, is to really get shoulder-to-shoulder, maybe with you or whoever, and spend some more time together, because I really want to know what's going on, day to day.
Thank you. That's, we, we were really excited when we, when you reached out, our team is really excited, and I believe next Tuesday, we have carved out a few hours to sit with you and walk you through this process. And other Commissioners, you're also, if, if this is beneficial for you, we're happy to schedule similar experiences for you as well. We know we can learn from you, and maybe you can also observe what's going on with our teams.
Well, and as I say, as, pardon me, as the local public health authority, you know, we were just about in a position to have a big discussion about masks today, but I need to be more informed about, you know, the questions that I don't even know to ask. You know, if we have authority, I need to be more educated and informed about what's really happening in real time out there. You know, we hear about the, the published numbers, but, you know, I want to see kind of the numbers being created is my goal at this time.
That's fair, that's fair.
And Nahad, can you address herd immunity? Because originally, we were talking about 70%, but that wasn't going to be quite good enough. We wanted to get to 80%, and if the county is at at least over 72% now, and with our positives that have recovered, we've got to be at like 5%. So, what happened to herd immunity? Is that now gone? Because that was something that we had heard from your, from our health authorities.
Yes.
That are telling us.
And I think our target has always been around 80% coverage, that's my understanding. Now, what, so herd immunity as a concept has not gone away. However, it is elusive in terms of a particular number, and if I were to quote a number right now, certainly two months from now, I'm going to be wrong. So, I better not do that. But what I can say is that one of the variables that goes into determining herd immunity, which is basically enough coverage in a community that can help interrupt transmission, is that reproduction number, which I'm sure you've heard of called RNOT, right? We've talked about this. The original virus had between 2 to 3, like 2.5 are reproduction number. That, that meant that if I walked in as, as someone who was infected into a room with people who were not vaccinated, or they didn't have natural immunity, I could, on average, on average, transmit the virus to two to three people and get them infected, too. Right now, with the Delta variant, what we're seeing is the reproduction number of around 8 to 10, which is kind of resembling chickenpox numbers, right? I mean, you've heard of these chickenpox varicella parties where people bring kiddos together and get them vaccinated, and that's, they do that partly because it's a contagious virus, and that's what this Delta variant is resembling right now. It's highly contagious. And that reproduction number factors into the determining the herd immunity, a target that the committee should embrace for interrupting transmission. And that's why this number, Commissioner, in terms of herd immunity, is going to change. And if we say 80, 85% now, I promise you, six months from now, maybe with the Lambda variant or some other variant, it's going to even change further. Or maybe the reproduction goes down, and that means we can interrupt it. So, there is frankly, no good answer for this. What, the only thing I can say to the committee is that the best chance right now that we have is getting vaccinated. These vaccines, even with the Delta variant, are serving their purpose, which is preventing severe disease and death, and that's really critical for us.
So, as I say, I'm, we have other items to talk about here. If, $700,000 at this time, and we know that there'll be more.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to have some further discussion on that. This, this $2 million number is not a, is not a, it's not a budget, you know, where, you know, we know, if we approve $2 million, you're going to go out and spend $2 million. This is, this is, you know, a reservoir of capacity, and I think we, we know that COVID is unpredictable. I mean, this, this, this current surge, I mean, I was just looking at the curve of, you know, weekly case numbers. I mean, this current surge is, it's steeper than any of the other surges we've had so far. So, we, we can't hamstring ourselves by putting, putting capacity constraints on our COVID response. I, I think we need to set, set an envelope and, you know, give our, our, give our Health Services team, you know, the latitude to do, to respond swiftly and do what's necessary to help us, you know, get, you know, get COVID, get the Delta variant under control. So, I, I would like to approve the, the $2 million amount with the understanding that, you know, again, it's a, it's an, it's a capacity reservoir, it's not a budget that we, that we automatically expect Health Services to fully spend down. If they don't use all of $2 million, then, then we put it back in the pool to be used for something else. But, but, you know, we need to be able to respond rapidly and decisively during, you know, this critical period, you know, of the next few, few months. We know that, I mean, the best predictions are that, that, you know, the Delta-fueled surge of COVID is going to last into the fall. So, I mean, that gets us, that gets us into, you know, well into the six-month period that we're, that we're talking about, and we have no idea what's going to happen after this at the moment. I, I am hopeful that, you know, you know, the, the Delta variant is going to put the fear of God into, into a whole lot of people, and they're going to get vaccinated, and they're going to mask up and do what's necessary right now to, you know, really bring our case numbers down. But we don't know whether that's going to happen or not. So, so I, I, I'm not exactly, we haven't, we haven't done this before, where there's a motion made, and, and I want to, you know, is it, is it possible to actually make a second motion on top of that, or, or, you know, a, an alternative motion?
Sure, you could amend the motion, you could not second the motion, the motion could die for lack of a second.
Well, the motion was seconded.
If you voted, you could, with Chair approval, you could do a competing, pass a second motion as well. So, you're saying to have two side-by-side to consider? 700 grand, one for $2 million?
I have a question. I was, I believe we were told that the contact tracing, we're spending $40,000 a week on that. Is that not a true number at this moment in time?
Correct. So, our average is about 30,000 in temporary staff, which spans a multitude of topics.
Okay, you're saying 30 and not 40?
Right.
So, the 40 would cover 17 and a half weeks. So, you know, that's, that's quite about a time to see where we're at, but with 30,000, that's actually going to cover a lot more. I'm referring to the 700,000. And then I feel like we can readjust at that moment in time. We are getting, you know, we will be getting our second ARPA funding next year, but we can definitely have funds sitting out there that we're not spending, because we are very, very carefully going to spend this money and, you know, and be conservative. And, you know, leave money there, but at this time, just, I don't know, I think we could wait it out.
And I, I mean, I guess another, you know, another piece of what I'd propose is if we, if we make, if we create this $2 million, you know, capacity reservoir right now, we could ask for quarterly reports on, you know, those, those $2 million. Where are we at? You know, how are we looking going into the, to the next quarter? You know, you know, you measure, measure our expenditures against our projections of those $2 million and, and see how we're doing.
Well, at 30,000, that's going to cover six months.
Right, right. So, we are, the 700,000 covers July 1 through the end of December, so that's the six months.
Right.
We are happy to provide even monthly updates, if that is preferred, to track. And I think that you're spot-on, Commissioner Chang, in terms of this is an earmarking of funds, so we can track where we're at and what we're seeing in terms of the trends and what we might project moving forward based on the transmission.
Dr. Conway?
So, I know that Emily and Nahad are very modest in talking about the challenges that we face, but this is a, it's a very rough time for staff to be lagged, preparing for, and I think, I think accountability is good. I think we should commit to whatever accountability the commission would like, but I think that would be both helpful for morale and also diminish the recurrent administrative burden on our staff to just go ahead and fund this.
At the $2 million level you're advocating for?
Yes, yes, sir. I think it's, it's a very carefully-made, sharp pencil estimate. I commend Cheryl for quite a bit of time spent in it. We wouldn't be asking for this frivolously.
Well, yeah, so at this time, I'm still, well, so I will acknowledge that it was a motion by myself for the $700,000 amount, and it's not anything to do about some of the things implied here. I want to take this in steps and move forward. I want, so is there still a second for that amount?
Yes. I mean, through the end of the year, clearly, we'll know how long we're dealing with it, and the community, are they being notified? I realize people are really tired of the situation, but is the positive person being called by one person? And I, every, I know, every story is different. I get that, and I know that that's, to do a good job, it takes a lot of time, Emily. I appreciate that, and you have to train people. It's, it's very, very time-consuming, and yet, we really do want our community to be protected.
So, and there are different views about this, but I want to let you know, I mean, our Health Department is a stellar group of folks providing professional services and resources at a time of a worldwide pandemic. So there's no intention of thinking there's anything less than. Uh, one of the things I'm seeing on paper here is we're talking about this is going to be funding into June 2023. So I think about a pandemic. Uh, I don't, I, you know, I haven't lived through this, but I was envisioning a two year period when we got started, and now we're talking about, well, the next year when we're still managing this, which is fine. But I mean, this is, let's take it step by step, is my thought process. Uh, Dr. Conway, so we're in the middle of a motion, and this will be other discussion to, please join us.
There is one other comment I'd like to make in the same way that I mentioned that both Emily and Nahad and even Cheryl have been very modest in the request. The other really major factor is that we're having a great deal of difficulty hiring people, particularly temporary staff. So having a very high level of uncertainty about the the length of tenure when we hire people, as long as they're deemed necessary, really casts a shadow over our ability to recruit. It's a very tight market. People that have experience in this area or that have credentials that make them readily trainable, very difficult to get. So I think that we would be hamstrung in our recruitment to have quite a short leash on the timeframe. On the flip side, we're happy to be fully accountable, transparent, and go into great detail as needed if you want to visit and see what people are doing. Commissioner Dare, I think what you're describing with the person, you know, would be a gross exception to the rules since we're having trouble reaching, this reaching the people we need to meet. So it sounds like it was a mistake and some sort of bookkeeping problem, but I don't think that that's at all an example of what's going on. I'm very concerned, once again, that if we have this short interval, it'll be very, very difficult because because when we do the hiring, whether it's a contract or if it's a term employee, it says right in it what the duration of it is. And right now, I know that many people, including, for example, one of my daughters, who's working as an epidemiologist for another state, they're getting constant, um, offers, and the the length of length of service is certainly an important variable that those potential employees or contractors would consider. Thank you.
Cheryl, what is the hourly rate for this position? I mean, does it vary?
It varies.
What's the range then? Can we ask that?
We have. Go ahead.
Um, I would have to get that information.
We have, well, I I have that. So we have people ranging from 30s, $30, like 30s range, to in the 40s. And there is a premium, obviously, from that, the temp agency takes. So the person does not get that entire amount, nor do they get benefits and other entitlements that come with it. And because this kind of work generally can be done remotely, guess what? All the other counties and even states, they can hire qualified people and have them work from the comfort of their homes on Purcell Street. So that's just an example of a street that came to my mind.
And if I heard you correctly, uh, a little while ago, you already said that these people have been willing to be extremely flexible and and show up when they're needed and not show up when our case numbers are down. So I mean, to, um, to be employed on a temporary basis without benefits with, you know, the temp agency taking a cut of thus $30 or $40, and to to be that flexible for us, I, you know, I I I think we should be highly motivated to try to do what we can to retain those people.
Well, it's people, Commissioner, believe it or not, even though the pay is good, most people are doing it because they want to make a difference in this community. And Commissioner Devon, when you, um, when we welcome you next week to, um, Health Services to shadow our team, I think you'll see firsthand that it's very personal for a lot of them. They do the work in a very professional manner, but their heart and soul is in it, and they're exhausted by the end of the phone call.
Well, yeah. I'm looking forward to that. So as I say, I'm, I'm clear where I'm at on this, and, you know, six months from now, I mean, so by making a $2 million commitment, I could just see things changing. Things are so dynamic right now. Uh, you know, if we need to go up in the commitment, that's fine, too. So I'm not saying we need to shut this down. I'm saying we need to make the 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 correct investment, and from what we're expecting to see, I don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. So as I say, I am not uncomfortable with a six month, six month commitment with all the information provided, and, uh, you know, what the future brings, we'll, we'll be able to review. And we'll, we do, we communicate regularly on these topics, so.
I mean, I would bring it back November 15th if it does pass.
But if we only give people six months of predictability and certainty, it, it causes unnecessary stress, and it puts us again at risk of losing people. So I, I mean, you know, if if you want to proceed with six months, you know, I would ask that we ensure that, you know, that, you know, Greg, that you block out 2 million total, and, you know, that this, this 700,000 is the first piece of that, but that the other, the remainder of that 2 million, uh, we we make sure we don't, we don't allocate to something else. Uh, but, uh, but I I still, you know, if we're going to do that, I really don't see good reasons for us not to just create the one year of assured capacity so that, which, you know, will will draw down judiciously and, you know, appropriately as needed to effectively, um, fight COVID.
So I I can comment on that a little bit here. So just as as the commission has decided to fund those early buckets, uh, you could do that with this as well. So you could put 700,000 or some amount that you've decided to into an approved spend, and then you could put the other, let's just use 1.3 as an example, into a bucket that you will, you're reserving for that purpose if that's, or any other combination of numbers if you like to.
So, yeah, along those lines, I'd like to, yeah, let's start to think about the buckets and how it is, uh, you know, it's like you've been providing a spreadsheet with us, but maybe the first, you know, first, there's a little graphic talking about the buckets and how, you know, some some graphical way to think about those buckets, too. Tom Anderson was possibly ready to say something?
Actually, Commissioner, I was going to say something very similar to Greg.
Okay, good.
That you could do a, um, just a reserve for, uh, next time, as opposed over and above the 700.
So, uh, Dr. Conway, stand by, please. I'm not opposed to putting a bucket out there at all. So how about a change of motion to a $2 million bucket with $700,000 allocation at this time? Do you support that, Commissioner Dare?
Um, yes, because we're actually going to get another check, um, May of 2022. So for that last, you know, where they're asking for more funding, we we do have more funds coming up. I, you know, is this, is our spreadsheet actually considering the 38 million? Or are we working really on the 19 million at this moment in time?
No, it's the entire ask, so.
Right. So definitely would have to allocate it that way.
Okay. So, yeah, the motion has been modified and supported. Dr. Conway?
So my foremost concern with the regime that's been proposed is that if people have a a six month initial appointment, they'll be looking probably from the time they arrive for their next job, certainly by the third or fourth month, they'll be investing a lot of their time and emotional energy in doing so. So I wonder if there's some way, I do appreciate the, uh, saying that there'd be a withhold or a set aside, and I think that's very helpful. But what I'd suggest is that we do something closer to real time and looking at the pace of spending and revisit this sooner rather than later so that we don't have people that are, feel that their their time is running out. So if we wait until November, it'd be very late to be giving people reassurance. They probably will have taken other assignments at the end of this, this short tenure.
Uh, Dr. Conway, I need to push back on that just a little bit. You know, temporary employees are different from limited durations. There are no guarantees on continued employment of any duration for temps versus limited duration. So I I think we just need to be careful in how we characterize assurances beyond any kind of certain time for temporary employees.
I agree. I was actually referring primarily to contractors and the longevity of their contracts through the employment agencies.
Understood. Uh, robust discussion on this item. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Following Dr. Conway's, um, point there, I I do think, yes, if we're talking about creating a $2 million bucket with a $700,000 six month allocation right now, it would be, it would be good for us to set up some milestones, early milestones, to, uh, to check on, to check on that number. I mean, even if it's, uh, I I guess the shorter amount of time we're willing to commit more to, the more frequent I would recommend we make the check-ins. So, you know, if we were willing.
Do you think the ARPA discussion that we're going to have very regularly in the next few months is going to be the time to understand this?
Um, I would say, um, we're going to have wide ranging discussions about COVID all the time, uh, but about these, this particular pool of funds that are meant to shore up our, our main capacity to fight the virus. Um, I I would suggest that if we're only willing to commit six, six months of funding right now, that we, uh, we do a monthly check back on that, on the, on the, on the dollars, uh, how we're doing with, you know, our, our pace of spending, and whether, you know, every month we check to ensure that, um, we've allocated an adequate amount of funding. Um, and then think, and on, at every month, we think about adding essentially another month to to that, you know, to keep our six month, um, our, our six month capacity rolling.
So part of our COVID update once a month?
If we were.
Every other week, we can do it once a month on our COVID update?
I guess. I I I mean.
That may be a good time to do it. Let's practice that and see how that goes.
And the other thing that we have to think about is that I've been called by the fire departments, and a lot of their volunteers are not vaccinated, they do not want to be vaccinated, but then therefore, as of what, the starting of September 1st, they will need to be COVID tested, what is it, on a weekly basis? Otherwise, we may lose a lot of our volunteers, um, in the community. So that's another COVID cost that we're going to have to make, you know, hopefully Dr. Young could do that for us, go out and weekly test our, our fire people, you know, so that they would know that, hey, every Monday, she's going to be there, and you need to have your test, or you are not going to be able to be allowed to serve.
Or better yet, Commissioner, hopefully this is the tipping point for people to get vaccinated, for those who are on the fence. They can consider getting vaccinated because now we have months and months of data with proof both safety and efficacy.
But but yes.
Well, let's hope that they perhaps take the vaccinations off the emergency status. You know, what, we keep waiting for that.
Hopefully, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right.
I mean.
We're almost there.
Yeah, well, it's like, okay, that hasn't been done yet.
But but you're right, if if we, you know, this is just one more example of how like, how our testing capacity, our vaccination capacity, you know, they need, they may need to be dialed up for, you know, unexpected, unanticipated, uh, unanticipated reasons. And that is, I, in my mind, an additional argument for, again, creating an adequate reservoir of capacity so that we can respond as needed to, um, to the the twists and turns of the pandemic.
Okay, uh, so let's call for the vote. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Uh, yes, but I would prefer to be voting for something else.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. So that's $700,000 allocation today.
A monthly basis, then.
And we'll, we'll add a financial update to every other COVID update that we're doing. So as I say, I mean, we are the local public health authorities, we're a three person board, we're the front end of this. We just about ended up in a firestorm of policy decision this morning. Governor took that away from us. Uh, we need to understand what's going on real time. If more resources are needed, they're available. I mean, let's not think of this as a negative. This is positive. More resources are available if needed.
So Commissioner, I just want to make sure we're, we're committing to your request and 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 there's no misunderstanding. So on a monthly basis, um, our fiscal, esteemed fiscal team will put together a report and share with your good selves, maybe through Tom or through our county administrator or through Greg. Is that, is that the ask?
Yeah, and the proposal is possibly to add it to a COVID update. We're doing those every other week, so it'd be once a month, uh, and it just could be one page plus a little bit of discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to see us, the the board, be willing to essentially every month add another month of funding to to ensure that you have a six month, uh, you know, rolling pool of capacity to 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 work with.
Well, we're just, I just want to make sure that we walk away, before we walk away, we acknowledge your support and commitment to the high standards that we put in place. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our American Rescue Plan funding update. Could be a lot of other topics on, along this line also. So, um, at this time, review other funding requests.
Yeah, so in your packet, as I normally provide, is the, it, there's two lists. One is a list of just, just the eligible projects, those projects that we've reviewed against the regulations and have deemed those to be eligible. So those are in the packet, notified as eligible on the eligible list. The second list is simply the list of all requests. That includes those that are not eligible that have been requested, all requests, those that are eligible, and also those that are to be determined, those we haven't been able to, um, check against the regulations to determine whether or not they're eligible. So at this point, I would just open it up. If there, if you would like, we can review the eligible, we can review any list you'd like to, and as a consideration for, um, further funding.
Yeah, so just acknowledging, you know, we can go down these, I'm not opposed to that. We have time this morning. Just in the activity in the last few days, I haven't gone through and kind of re-reviewed anything to pull anything out as a proposal from myself today to proceed. So if there's any, anything that's been pulled out by another commissioner, we could possibly, you know.
I I just say I'm really excited to see that there are a couple of, that we've had a couple of more childcare proposals, you know, and we're starting to see like a really unique spectrum of different kinds of, of childcare proposals rolling in. Uh, but my understanding is that we're going to have a, an in-depth presentation on that next week. So, um, you know, that, that, those are the proposals that are kind of catching my attention this week, but certainly want to wait, you know, to hear from, um, kind of long-term regional experts in that area before we make additional allocations.
Uh, yeah, so there may, there may not be, unless, do you have anything you think is kind of mature that we should evaluate today, or maybe we're just going to go next week?
The chambers are really, we're not ready to do that funding yet. We're still working on that with Dan.
So, so that was one of the follow-up items from last week. We've formed a, the group of chambers and COIC are coming together. We have a meeting set up in a week, I believe, and the question there is to really make, is to really review the regulations, which I've already sent to them, and to make sure that the asks are in line with those eligibility requirements, and then to come back to the board with those, with with a review. And so this will be done collectively as a group, also with COIC, because there's some questions on how to, how to actually administer those funds, and COIC is is sort of the expert in that area. So I think we'll be able to come back with a comprehensive answer to the question that was asked last week, and that'll take us a few weeks to get there. In addition, uh, I would say that future meetings coming up, we do have a meeting to review a comprehensive childcare availability, availability presentation. That'll be on the 16th. So that staff agenda item will be going in by tomorrow. And then we'll be coming back with a review of the food warehouse proposal with Neighbor Impact. That'll be on August 23rd. And on August 25th, there'll be a follow-up presentation regarding the Cleveland Commons proposal that we heard last week, and that will be with, both with housing works and Neighbor Impact, and that one's scheduled for 8:25. Um, in addition, we're working on the question of eligibility of converting or adding those RV spots as a question. So there's a lot, there's a lot kind of bubbling, some of it's.
Not quite for today, it's.
Yeah, some of it's on deck for the future.
Yep.
In addition, another option, the board. In addition, another option the board could decide is, if there's any, any item on those lists that maybe you want more information on, we can, we can queue those up for a.
Well, you know, the unintended consequences of things, Greg, I believe I mentioned to the, this to you, but because the one childcare venue that we had funded for the million dollars, they're going to be paying their people more, and people in the community came up to me and said, oh my gosh, am I going to lose all my people because they're now going to go over there and make more money? So, you know, when we do these things, it's really, it's very difficult, but we have to keep it, what is the word, fair in the community.
I think that would be a great question for next week.
Right. How do we keep things fair? And you see that a lot of childcare has closed. I was noticing it the other day, I was reading an article about it. And yeah, people have had to walk away from their businesses.
Greg, could you, could you just repeat, what's going to happen on, on August 30th again?
We don't have anything on August 30th. On the 25th, we have the Cleveland Commons proposal coming back.
Okay.
More in-depth review with Neighbor Impact and with Housing Works. Backing up a couple of days on the 23rd is the food warehouse proposal.
Mm-hmm.
And then next week on the 16th is.
Childcare.
The childcare availability.
So the only thing I can kind of conclude, I mean, the, the chamber efforts, but these are all coming, so it's exciting that we're kind of set there. But groundwater protection, I think of Terrebonne, if there's a way to, you know, maybe it's just a bucket at this point in time, but to empower the, the community discussion for that. So, it kind of brings me back to the conclusion of, you know, maybe it's a pie chart, or it's a little graphic with a bucket about how big the bucket is and how much we spend out of it, but, you know, there's a, I kind of would like to see that $38 million graph or graphic about, you know, what we've committed to in a bucket, unallocated bucket, and, you know, because I'd like to look at it at the high level.
So in other words, this list just represented graphically?
Yeah, so then, yeah, funded and proposed, yeah, we could go all kinds of ways with it. But as I say, if we're taking a $38 million number, and we're making kind of pre-allocated categories, it'd be good to see those, and then, yeah, it'll just help kind of.
Oh.
The big picture.
The really great news was, the slab was poured, I got a picture of it Friday, so.
At Veterans Village?
Yes, Veterans Village, you know.
Ooh, are they ready to go? We talked about it on Wednesday, and they poured it on Friday.
I know, I thought that was really, I couldn't believe, government inaction, it happened that quickly, and yeah, so they're really happy and thrilled, and hopefully, the trailer, the social unit will arrive this week.
Yeah.
So, that's the good news, you know, because we thought, we went there September 1st.
Bet he wouldn't have sold his phone for a week.
Yeah, we, we went there September 1st last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And we thought that was going to open last fall, you know, for the, before the winter, and look it.
Yeah.
A year later, we are still pouring concrete.
That's going to be a great example for the community.
I know.
It is.
And they desperately need it open soon, so.
It, it's going to be a, a great example for the community. I just wanted to circle back on the Terrebonne groundwater discussion. I have not had a chance to read the background material that's been produced yet by our, you know, by our staff, you know, kind of sculpting out that opportunity, but as someone who's very familiar with community water systems, I wanted to just kind of flag a concern that building a community water system is one thing, operating and managing it over the long term is, is a, is a whole nother ballgame. And what we, what we see nationally, and particularly in the Western United States, is that there are, there are communities, neighborhoods, who set up a community water system, and, you know, the, the classic challenge is that they, they, they're willing to pay, you know, a basic fee for water delivery on a, on a weekly basis, but community water systems typically do not charge enough and create the reserves to be able to adequately maintain and eventually replace their infrastructure. So, you know, we have massive failure of small community water systems across the country. You know, coming, you know, those bills are coming due right now, and as a result, you know, A, we have, you know, inadequate, inadequate infrastructure investments, and B, we have a whole bunch of people who are drinking unsafe water, or, you know, whose water deliveries are failing. So, one of my particular concerns with that, that Terrebonne proposal is going to be that I want to, I will want to see a really robust organizational and administrative structure created around that guarantees the sustainability of the system. And if we haven't, if, if people haven't started thinking about that yet, then, you know, I, 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 I hope they will be.
Engineering study includes that. We're talking about sewer. There is a water system, there's a water district in Terrebonne. It's, it's sewer system we're talking about. There's existing drill holes into the lava base that is, are being used for disposal, and there's possible failure of some systems that do not have options to, to replace or repair systems. So this is sewer and septic, and yes, the business case is documented also.
It was.
And we need the community to buy into it, because we, even if we, you know, pay X amount for whatever investment, it's not a county sewer system, it's a community sewer system within a footprint of an urban unincorporated community, so they're not incorporated, but they do have the land use designation where they can sewer.
It's the, it was the third study, and I guess I believe the third time is always the charm.
There you go.
And, and I know that commercially, there's a tremendous need for it, so can you get all those businesses? And a couple of them have been closed for a period of time, and I, so, and the fact what Redmond is doing, I think is extremely helpful, and if that can go through with Redmond and, you know.
Yeah.
Communities collaborate and work together, because we've got to keep our water safe.
Commissioner, if I can just add to that, I'm happy to arrange for a full briefing for Commissioner Chang on the study that we helped fund for sewer capacity in Terrebonne. And I can tell you that organizational structure is absolutely part of the scope of what they're looking at with this, as well as some phasing alternatives, to start with, you know, those businesses that Commissioner DeBonne referenced, that are most immediately impacted by the lack of a viable, you know, even short-term alternative. So, yeah, point's well taken, but I believe that those aspects of the, the sculpting work that's going on right now have been taken into account, but we're happy to kind of bring you fully up to speed on, on the range of the things that are being talked about as part of that work.
And really, remember, I just started off with the bucket, you know, if, if there's a bucket, then, then the community can say, oh, if we do this, just like you're referring to, if we take responsibility and maintenance and long-term care of a system, these monies could be available. So if, we do need to work both sides of this equation at this time.
Okay, that's, that's great background, thank you. And I, and yes, I'd, I'd love to get more up to speed.
Great.
Thank you for those comments, Tom.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's just, so next week, yeah, what's the schedule?
So next week, in your, in the agenda packet for next week, will be an overview of the proposal, of the childcare discussion.
Okay, good.
And again, just as normal, you'll see these lists again in the packet.
And then, as I say, I know, I think of if, if any one commissioner wants to, you know, kind of mature an ask, and be prepared to advocate for it and get buy-in, you know, we could be in that spot too, where we just start picking things off. As I say, having a vision on the buckets and the scope of what we're, what the asks are, what the commitments are, and what the buckets are, is where I'd be at right now.
And, and Greg, you did hear that we are going to have a meeting next Wednesday, because the AOC meeting in Hermiston got postponed. So if, I don't know if that would help you at all next week, but that it would be a possibility.
So yeah, were you notified of that? The fact that we, it was asked, you know, could, if we, if we're not going out of town, would we have a meeting? And I said, well, yeah, let's look for agenda items. So that'd be next Wednesday.
On the 16th?
18th.
18th, okay.
Wednesday.
So I already have the folks from the community queued up for the 16th, but yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, if it helps at all.
The, the one topic that we haven't really waded into yet, that I, I think is also pretty high urgency, is are the affordable housing requests.
Yeah.
From, from the habitats, from the Core Land Trust, from, you know, from a number of these groups. So, I, I don't know whether we could work on scheduling that out into early September sometime, but that one, I, I mean, I think is actually fairly right, because there's only so many entities out there that do affordable housing projects. And I, I believe that most of them have heard about ARPA already, and have already submitted requests, so it's, yeah, it's just some very big dollar amounts to consider.
Well, and that's why, yeah, having the buckets and the scope of this full 38.
Yeah.
And then we, do we talk, you know, 1, 3, 5, 10, 20 mil, you know, I mean, because that could be huge chunks of.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll do our homework on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
So at this time, item number eight, spay and neuter grant awards. I think Tom can kick.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is a program that we've run for some time. When people purchase or renew their dog license through our finance department, they are given the option to voluntarily donate to a spay and neuter program. So we collect those funds, not a, it's not a lot, but it's, it's an ongoing stream, and then we contribute to that as well, essentially, you know, more or less match it. And each year, we, with those funds, we put out a solicitation to nonprofits who, you know, either do spay and neuter, or house animals, or provide public education and so forth. So that went out. We received six proposals back, four of whom we've funded in the past for spay and neuter programs. We had a couple new ones this year. As we've done each year, the direction of the board, our dog board, reviewed them and provided some recommendations that are part of your packet in terms of the allocation to each of the six groups. All six are proposed to be funded at, at different amounts. I wasn't part of that process, but I suspect because of the, kind of the curve numbers that you have there, there was a percentage-based allocation to, to each of them. So with that, that kind of provides sort of the background on the program, what it does, and, and the proposed funding structure.
So yes, six applications, definitely a percentage-type number, you know, going from, what, $1,500 to $2,500. I want to thank, you know, the group that reviewed this, and it looks like all six are proposed to receive some resources here. A spay and neuter program helps, you know, just population management of dogs, cats, and rabbits.
The rabbit one, I was looking at that, and they have, they have to spay, a rabbit costs $150. I mean, the dogs were way less. I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, I would hope they could find a veterinarian that was more compassionate. I do, I've had pet bunnies, I love bunnies, and anyway, but I did see that they were receiving less funding than, I guess they received the least amount of recommendation.
I also just wanted to express appreciation to the Dog Control Board of Supervisors for reviewing all these proposals and making recommendations for us, and I, I'm fully supportive of the recommendations that have been made.
And last year, we actually gave funding to COVO, COVO, for the animal, the, you know, the veterans, animals, their cost, et cetera. Now, this year, I noticed that they have it allocated to the Companion Animal Medical Project, which is called KEMP. So, want to thank those veterinarians for their part, and really, I'm happy that they're here on our list.
So I'm supportive of the allocations proposed also. So the one question would leave us with, you know, is there an investment here that, I don't, I'm not proposing to change anything today, but the other way to look at this is, you know, have kind of a primary spay and neuter program in the county that others can go to also, you know. So this is sending it six ways. Each one of these organizations could bring it to something like the Humane Society with their resources to do spay and neuter also. And as I say, I'm not proposing to change that today, it's just another way to look at it.
No, it's great to see furry friends and bright side, and I do own my recycling for bright side, unless my husband takes it to the transfer station. And I've always tried, like, stopping from doing that.
Cleaning up the garage, yeah.
Honey, that's for bright side.
There you go.
Yeah, because everything counts.
I did wonder where the spay and neuter project shows up in, in, in this, and I, I'm just assuming that a number of these intermediary organizations are, are actually bringing animals to the spay and neuter project to perform the procedure itself.
Yeah, so they may be going there, just like, like I said, but maybe naturally going there. Here's the, here's the, we're asking for the service, and here's the money for it, instead of sending them the money. So it's just, and it's all about relationships in this community also. So is there a motion?
I move, we accept the recommendations from the, the dog board, Dog Control Board of Supervisors for the allocation of these six grantees.
I second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
And thank you for the, the Dog Control Board of Supervisors for their work on this. I think it's really important that we.
Oh, yeah.
Get back to the community, and we do seem to have a lot of animals.
Yep.
A lot of pets.
Okay, other items? Well, or, yeah, so do we have executive session this afternoon? Okay, so then, other items? Anything else brought for today? Yeah, so I just want to acknowledge that lots of community input in the last few days on masks and COVID, and do want to advocate for just the culture, and this is where I was at, the culture of, you know, staying safe, being safe, looking out for each other's, your friends, your family. As I say, I'm wearing a mask indoors, wore it to the store the other day, taking it off during the meeting, but I'll put it on as we step away here also.
I, I'll just report back that since our Wednesday, August 4th meeting, I've been to the Irrigation District Download, and also was on a panel for the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance, and there was just a tremendous community appreciation for the investment that we made in on-farm efficiency and, and private lateral piping last week.
Oh, I would love to congratulate our fair for their attendance numbers, quite amazing, up 25% from our 100th fair. And also yesterday, I met with Jeff for a few moments, and the 4H and FFA numbers look like it's going to be 1.7 million. So honestly, from the bottom of my heart, I thank the community for supporting the youth of Deschutes County. What an incredible amount of support. In fact, personally, I got a letter from someone in the county, they mailed it July 16th, that was a postmark, and I got the letter on August 4th. So don't ask me where that letter was, but, you know, just the community, 1.7 million for the youth, I so appreciate it. Thank you very much, and congratulations. And thank you to the Fair Association for an excellent job. I know they worked really hard, and it was quite, quite unbelievable what they did.
Yesterday, I was able to attend the Sun River-Lapine Economic Development Meeting in Lapine, so that was two city councilors, other community members, city managers at the table with us, and Patricia Lucas is the staff person there. So the, the, kind of the news for us is, is that the relationship between SLED and EDCO is, has been worked out. So SLED is its own entity in partnership with EDCO, instead of Patricia being a staff person for EDCO. So remember, there was, she, she wanted to be in a contractor relationship. She's also a contractor for Midstate Electric, she's managing other projects, so she's truly a contractor, part-time with the SLED Board. And then, so the money that was allocated through our video lottery funds goes to EDCO, and being part, a partnership with EDCO means Patricia does have access to EDCO's, you know, databases and information. So there's a fee associated with that, and the, the difference is going back to the SLED Board for her, it's going to the city for her employment. So maybe, you know, so this year, it's all worked out, maybe next year it'll be slightly different if, if they kind of know, you know, maybe we'd send two checks or something. And it was just the, the dynamics of how she wanted to be employed is what triggered this, this change in the dynamics. But it's going to work out real well, real positive. There's a lot of people kind of kicking the tires and looking at Lapine for business investment right now. It boils down to, you know, just the rent, the, the historical rental, or lease rates, you know, so just per square. so just per square foot lease rates in Lepine. Come to find out, there's not a lot of track record on this, not a lot of history, because most businesses own their property, there's just the, it's been a point in time where majority of ownership is operating in their own owned building. So there's not a big lease market for people to invest in, knowing what other lease rates are. There's some, but it just keeps people a little bit weary about, you know, building a spec building is the problem right now. Because there's, people want to lease, and people want to build, but there's just kind of a catch-22 about the history of the area. And I'm sure other places have gone through this, too. So a lot of activity being proposed, though. I was able to go see Levi at the sawmill on Russell Road. Do you know about his operation? He's doing custom sawing of ponderosa pines and cedar, incense cedar. He's doing projects for people like around the country, you know, just custom, I mean, it's not a big operation, but he's got, you know, his customers are not in the area usually, but he also has retail, just rough-cut lumber from ponderosas, not a lot of jack pine. But he's just a couple guys, four or five people, milling as fast as he can, he said right now.
Running like a portable sawmill or wood?
Yeah, he's got it, yeah, set up in a nice, permanent location with a concrete floor and a shed, but yeah, it's kind of like a glorified portable sawmill, you know, bandsaw.
I think Commissioner Palmer's doing something along those lines, too.
Well, and, yeah, juniper was mentioned. He said, oh, yeah, because there's juniper grants out there to do it, but he said, no, I can't even get to juniper, nobody, I don't have time for that. But, you know, it sounds like there's a, you know, juniper supply, people would buy juniper, and there's juniper incentive dollars from the state. But the market doesn't, he doesn't, he's like, no, I can't even deal with that right now.
Supply is a lot trickier than it sounds. I can tell you, there's 6 million acres of juniper that's not supposed to be there, out there, but the percentage of that material that is dimension, you know, the sawlog size is tiny.
Well, so it was interesting, though, because that's what Patricia Lucas asked him about. And she knows that there's incentives out there for a mill just like him, and just fill out the paperwork and we'll send you money. But that means you are going to mill juniper. And he's, you know, he said, I can, you know, I can get incense cedar, he called it, so, and they look like, I said, oh, is that a big pile of juniper? He said, nope, that's all incense cedar. And he says, once in a while, a juniper log will be in the middle of a cedar, but there must be supply, and it's not even from local, obviously, but of the cedar boards, plus ponderosa logs. Plus, he's doing salvage, I don't know of the species, not a whole lot of difference, from McKenzie Canyon, you know, so he's able to buy truckloads of logs and mill them up. And he's got some just retail sale, but a lot of people have contracted with him also for a wood supply, so.
Yeah.
Just interesting to see him.
Yeah. The one other thing I'd report is, so I believe I mentioned earlier, or at a previous meeting, that SB 762 included $21 million for large landscape fuels reduction and resiliency projects. So we had a preliminary meeting with Ed Keith and the Forest Service and some other, you know, community partners the other day to talk about whether there's a landscape within Deschutes County that is, that would be, you know, eligible and high priority and compete well for funding on that. So very early stages of, very early stages of planning on that, but we figured out, you know, all the data layers that we need, and kind of some of the, you know, key conditions that we'd need to meet, you know, one of which is matching funds, and another which, for Forest Service lands is, you know, NEPA-ready acres. So, just so everyone knows, that is in the works, and probably will be led by the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project. But, you know, I could imagine at a later date that the county says, or the state says, you know, we want, you know, certain kinds of entities to be the applicant, and, you know, Deschutes County might fit that role as, when we get the guidelines for that.
Management effort from, you know, like Ed Keith or whoever.
It'd be, yeah, there would be.
It'd be all contracting, subcontracting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, they want to, they want to push $21 million out the door to be expended on implementation in like a pretty narrow time window from, I'm guessing, you know, by the time that they actually get contracts let, you know, you know, like a proposal processed done, contracts let, I'm guessing that the timeframe is going to be, these funds need to be spent between January 2022 and June 2023.
Reminds me that we need to come up with some kind of a chip boiler, or a consumer of biomass, you know, whatever that generically could be. Maybe it's time for that, because this will basically subsidize the market for a while. You know, what does that look like?
Yeah.
I mean, BioGreen tried for years, the solar industry blocked them out. You know, do we believe that burning a 100-year-old or an 80-year-old tree is net benefit or negative to the environment? So, you know, kind of answering that question upfront before you even do it, because, you know, either we watch it burn, burn up in a forest fire, or maybe we could capture it somehow.
Well, I.
And this is where you and I were.
Again, the.
Eight years ago, right?
The most ripe project that I know of is that Mount Bachelor project, and we did just, you know, Greg just told us that he doesn't think it's ARPA-eligible. So if we, if we want to, if we want to, if we want to support that project, we'll have to think of other ways. And John McLeod, the president of Mount Bachelor, he is, he is very interested in pursuing this partnership concept. So, you know, if it, if it makes sense to invite him in at some point, either for, to meet with us as a board, or for individual meetings, I'd encourage, I'd encourage us to move ahead with that.
Well, it's really just how do we help get it over the hump of initial investment?
Yeah, yeah.
And, I mean, we don't need to talk about it, we just need to know what the answer is. I mean, we can learn, you know, research other opportunities, but I don't see bringing them in for us to, I mean, I've met with them, I know them, I've talked to them, too. So how do we get that initial investment commitment to maybe federal or state dollars?
Yes, undoubtedly, it'll be federal, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I, you know, I could see, I mean, yeah, I've made, I've made the argument before, we should be using transient room tax dollars to invest in the forest and the river that bring people here. And this would be one, one way we could do that.
Well, so then, yeah, so then the question is, is, you know, 250,000 or 500,000 or $1 million investment the right number to get it over the hump or not?
Right.
You know, what would that number be? I don't know.
Yeah, or, or, I mean.
Because that could be a cash.
A whole, a whole other way of, a whole other way of approaching it would be to, you know, be an investment partner in the project, or to provide financing. I mean, there are ways that, there are multiple pathways that the county could invest in such a project.
Well, yeah, so I'm open to ideas. I don't, I don't know that we want to, government shouldn't be in the business game. If we can incentivize something one time, that's a lot different than, you know, a debt fund or a business partner. Yeah, I don't, those don't sound right to me as government.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, just from a fiscal perspective, you know, giving a project 500,000 or $1 million, you know, that's money out the door for, you know, I think we all agree, a very good purpose, but, you know, loaning someone $2 million, you know, means that you'll get your money back, too. So there's, you know, you know, it just depends on how we want to, you know, how we want to show up. But they did, they did send us an ARPA request, so I do think, you know, following up on that, it would be good to send them a formal response that says, you know, we don't think that this is ARPA-eligible, but we'd like to talk about other, other, other options.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare? Yeah, I mean, so I'm enthusiastic about trying to help, because, as I say, consuming biomass in any form, chips, forest waste, truckload of, you know, byproduct from the mill, is a huge opportunity.
You know, I did, no, I did think that the one in Lepine was going to go through, and then it died, right? So I really don't want to invest county money in a project, you know, and kiss it goodbye. That wouldn't be something that I would be, or, but I was hoping, I was hoping, you know, private industry could do it, and, you know, American continuity, you know, we seem to be able to do things. I worry if we're going to go to all-electric cars, are we going to have enough electricity to run those cars? So, yeah, I think, you know, looking at this is a really good idea. How do we clean up our forests and get some energy out of it?
When we pay, yeah, seven cents a kilowatt hour for electricity, that's the issue, because biomass was going to be 12 cents out the back door, which is the wholesale rate, and they need to sell it for 14, 15, or whatever it was, to have some kind of a markup. So basically, that's twice as much as our local electricity rates in the mid-state territory. And some markets do pay for that. So then it became a function of putting the electricity on the BPA lines to be sold in, you know, Portland Metro or whatever.
What about California?
Or wherever.
We're not that far.
But the solar industry blocked them out. They said, oh, we're going to take all the future capacity commitments right now. And it was a corporate play out of Wall Street that basically did it. And it's interesting when you hear about that.
The utilities don't love wheeling power for projects that they don't own, too, so they definitely don't, they don't make it easy. But just to kind of contrast this project, you know, to further contrast this project, basically, the BioGreen proposal was trying to produce electricity at a higher wholesale cost than many other options, both fossil and renewable, while the Mount Bachelor proposal is to, is to use wood, biomass, as an alternative fuel to propane, which is far more expensive than wood chips. So really, for the Mount Bachelor project, the hurdle is the first cost. You know, you make the, if you can get past the initial investment, then the, then the fuel cost savings over time will pay it back. It's just, if you don't have a two- or three-year payback, then getting the private sector to make it happen is challenging. So, so a subsidy from the county, or financing from the county could help to flip that dynamic.
Well, as I say, I mean, I'm, it'd be interesting to see if there's something there.
Yeah.
Remember, I got to see the H-Power plant in Hawaii. I toured it with my family when we were there a couple years ago now. H-Power's burning garbage, and they have a retail, or wholesale rate set by the state legislature, and I don't know what the number was, but it was like 30 or 50 cents a kilowatt hour, and, some number. But my point is, we were in the parking lot, and I said, well, what's that over there? And there's this big coal pile, black coal pile, the conveyors that bring it off of the ship. And he said, oh, yeah, we're shutting that coal plant down. It sells at a rate of 4 cents a kilowatt hour on the islands, when they can make electricity out of coal. And the H-Power was like, you know, 30 cents or something like that. So it was fully legislatively committed to, is how they, how they got over that difference in price, which is wild when I heard of the difference.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we're not that far of a spread here.
Coal has, you know, coal is, is super cheap to buy, but it has a whole lot of costs associated with it.
Well, but it was, I mean, that was that number, the wholesale number, and he knew it, and I'm like, oh, my goodness, that's a huge spread.
That's cool. Yeah, no, so, I mean, things like this Mount Bachelor project, where biomass is actually the cheaper fuel, is, are really exciting.
Okay, well, good discussion. Anything else today? Thank you for standing by for that. With nothing else, meeting adjourned.